Good evening. Going well. Welcome to the City Council Committee of the Whole Hearing on Crisis Response. Today is August 27, 2025. I am City Council President Zeke Cohen. Let me first begin by thanking my colleagues. To my left, I see Councilmember Blanchard, Councilmember John Bullock, Councilmember Felicia Porter, Councilmember Paris Gray, and Council Vice President Sharon Green Middleton. Thank you. Let me thank representatives from the administration as well as the mayor's office. I see we have our interim and acting health commissioner. Thank you for joining us, Dr. Taylor. I see we have our representatives from the fire department, the police department, BHSB, BCI, Jasmine Pope, Jamal Turner, Ray Kelly, folks from the fire department and the 911 system. And thank you to everyone who has joined us here this evening. Our run of show tonight will go as follows. After my remarks and remarks from Councilmember Bullock, we will hear from First Bishop Jaron Spriggs, a family member of Ms. Patricia Brooks. We'll then hear from a panel of community leaders and advocates. We will then hear from a panel of city government agencies, representatives from the mayor's office, and representatives from BHSB and BCI. Council members will then ask questions. Then we will hear virtual testimony tonight. We are not able to hear-- then we will hear public testimony tonight. We are not able to hear virtual testimony, but I invite those following us on Charm TV to send written testimony to testimony@baltimorecity.gov. This is going to be a tough hearing. From the outset, I urge anyone who needs help with a mental health or emotional crisis to call the 988 helpline. It is free and confidential 24 hours a day. Additionally, professionals from our executive-- I'm sorry, Employee Assistance Program and from Baltimore Crisis Response have joined us tonight and are available to anyone who would like to speak with them. Please look for them in the back of the room. Thank you for being here with us tonight. We are here tonight because no person in our city should lose their life to a mental health crisis. A psychiatric illness should not become a death sentence. Baltimore is home to some of the greatest hospitals in America. We took a public health approach to violence and dropped homicides nearly in half. I'm proud to say we were the first city in the United States to legislate trauma-informed care. And yet, when it comes to mental health, too many of our citizens are isolated and alone. Stigma and shame have constrained our ability to care for one another. And when people do call for help, they too often encounter systems that are fragmented and underfunded. Police are ill-equipped to provide mental health care. Our training for officers to respond to crises has fallen short. In June, three residents lost their lives while experiencing behavioral health crises. These incidents were tragic reminders that while we have achieved extraordinary progress in reducing violence across our city, our work is far from finished. Let me be clear. These deaths are under investigation by the Attorney General and other authorities. As such, we cannot and will not litigate them here tonight. What we can do, and what we must do, is fix the systems we've developed to bring mental health care to people in crises. As part of our 2017 consent decree, Baltimore established a system that is supposed to send, or as we will say tonight, divert calls for care made to the 911 system to our 988 helpline. We commend the critical work that Mayor Scott's team, led until recently by Ali Smith, has done to build this system. It puts us ahead of many cities in America. But there is more to be done. We've identified several gaps in our systems that we will address throughout this hearing. The first and most urgent gap is that we aren't getting health care to nearly enough people in crisis. Too many mental health crisis calls made to 911 are not being diverted to the 988 helpline. According to a report covering implementation of Paragraph 97 of the consent decree between July and December 2024, there were 4,270 calls to the 911 system coded as behavioral health calls. But according to data from Open Baltimore, the number of calls to 911 successfully diverted to the 988 helpline was 28. Now, to be clear, I understand that many of the 4,000 calls are not currently eligible for diversion, but a system that is diverting such a small percentage of behavioral health calls is deeply concerning. We need to figure out how to divert more behavioral health crisis calls away from 911 to 988. The second gap is that even when calls get to 988, we don't have enough mobile crisis response teams with clinicians or peers to meet the need. According to data from Behavioral Health System Baltimore in the first half of 2025, the monthly average response for mobile crisis response teams ranged between 92 and 136 minutes. By definition, a person in crisis needs help now. Two hours is way too long to wait for someone to arrive. In 2022, the City Council worked with the Trauma Informed Care Task Force to add $1.5 million to the budget to enable Baltimore Crisis Response to expand their operations. Clearly, it was not enough. We need to figure out what it would cost to staff up our mobile crisis response teams so that they can deploy quickly, whenever, and wherever a crisis occurs. And then we need to find the funding to pay for it. The third gap we found is that, in some cases, police officers who respond to people in crisis do not have specialized certifications in crisis response. According to the Baltimore Police Department, only 23% of patrol officers and 28% of patrol sergeants have received Specialized Crisis Intervention Team, or CIT, certifications. And the team monitoring BPD's compliance with the consent decree has warned that, at least in previous years, the department was, quote, "not ensuring the presence of CIT-trained officers at behavioral crisis events." I propose that we use our new powers of local control to make sure we have a best-in-class model for CIT training and for the deployment of CIT-certified officers to crisis scenes. We should require all new officers at the academy to get the specialized 40-hour CIT training in addition to the basic training that is currently provided. Finally, our systems are fragmented, with too many partners working in silos. We do not have effective coordination or an agency that oversees all the moving pieces. I believe that the Health Department, including our new acting commissioner, must meet this moment by breaking down silos and leading the effort to ensure coordination among all of the entities that work to help those in crisis. We need to create an Office of Behavioral Health within the Health Department that can manage, support, track, and hold all of our partners accountable. Someone within the administration needs to be fully accountable for managing this system. Someone needs to be able to require changes when the system does not produce the results we expect. We cannot accept a status quo where everyone is rowing hard but rowing in different directions. The issues tonight are personal. Mental health challenges impact my extended family as they do so many families throughout our city. We've all seen what it looks like when our brothers, sisters, cousins, sons, and daughters suffer in silence. We felt the fear and the anxiety of trying to care for someone who is struggling with a mental health disorder and can't get the help that they need. Baltimore has often stood at the forefront of innovation in public health. And in this moment, as we see parts of our federal government implode, it is absolutely critical that we get this right. Everyone in this room has a role to play in saving lives. With that, I will invite my colleague, Councilmember John Bullock, whose district experienced several of the recent crises, to offer his remarks. I also want to just welcome Councilmember Odette Ramos, who has joined us tonight.
So, thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, colleagues. Thank you to everyone who is here today. As was mentioned, this is a moment of reflection for our city. But also, it's a time to reflect on the lives lost. So, Mr. Abdullah, Mr. Melton, Ms. Brooks, their lives mattered. Some of their neighbors are here. Some of their friends are here. Some of their family members are here. What's also worth noting, yes, there are 14 city council districts. I happen to represent the 9th District, West and Southwest Baltimore, and that three of those incidences happened in the 9th District. What we also know is that some of the benefits, yet some of the challenges in our city are concentrated. So, we know that in West and Southwest Baltimore, we have higher concentration of poverty, of vacant housing, of substance abuse disorder, of returning citizens. And that concentration means that we have to have a renewed focus on all the things that lead to that. The social determinants of health. It's not just a matter of our physical health, but it's also our mental health. I'm also thankful that this is being heard in the Committee of the Whole. I know there were discussion a while back around whether this would be in the Public Safety Committee or Public Health Committee. But the reality is that this issue touches every single committee, every single member of this council, every person in the city. So, it requires all of us to have the sustained and direct focus on this issue. There may be a tendency at some times to point fingers. There's enough time to do that. But we also know there's a time to think about where the challenges were. How do we close those gaps? Who are the people here that need to do more? Whose voices need to be at the table? The president talked about some of the initiatives that have happened, but clearly, we have a lot further to go in terms of how we respond to people, how we treat people, how we recognize their humanity. But also, understanding that our public safety professionals in the city have very difficult jobs. We understand that there may be individuals who could be a danger to themselves, a danger to others. And how do we address those issues in a fashion that doesn't end in the loss of life? But also, as we engage in this conversation, to ensure that, as we move forward, that we look at all parts of our city, all people in our city, regardless of their age, their gender, their orientation, their race, their income, that they're going to be valued, that we'll treat them with dignity, but also that we hear from those who are on the front lines. Because oftentimes, decisions have to be made. And I will tell you, there's a lot of trauma here in this room. I can tell you, having to watch body cam videos, it brings trauma to me. It brings trauma to some of my colleagues who have to witness that. But it also brings trauma to the people in those neighborhoods. So, we start talking about behavioral health, mental health, and crisis response, understand that it's not just in that moment. It's us also in the hours, days, weeks, months, and years that go by as people deal with that loss and deal with those memories and deal with that trauma. So, again, I thank everyone's here. I'm also thankful for the citizens of Baltimore who came out today. The folks I saw who were walking in the building, who came here a half hour or 45 minutes early to make sure their voices were heard, the people who are going to be here, the people who are watching, because it shows that you care and that the lives of your brethren and your sisters matter to you like they matter to us. So, again, thank you for being here tonight.
Thank you, Councilmember Bullock, for your leadership. I want to also recognize, joining us, Councilmember Ryan Dorsey as well as Councilmember Jermaine Jones and Councilmember Mark Parker. Thank you for being here with us tonight, as well as Deputy Mayor Letitia Girasa. Thank you for joining us. We will now hear from Bishop Jaron Spriggs, who is the brother of Ms. Brooks. Please come on up to the microphone and give some remarks. And please press the red button when you begin.
All right. Thank you, President Cohen, to the members of the council. I would distinguish guests. I've come today to represent my family and to let you know the impact the death of Patricia Brooks has had on our family. It did then, and it is still having a great impact on us mentally as well as physically. It is our firm belief that what happened to her was a tragedy that did not have to take place. That while I heard President Cohen talk about the fact that there is a system that is in place and we are to become the model for the nation. And on paper, that sounds good to hear it said, sounds good. But the fact is that the system is broken. It is fragmented, and it needs to be fixed. The homicide rate is down, but the mental health rate is rising. And many of the persons who are experiencing a mental health issue are being, one, murdered, two, not helped, not getting the necessary resources that they have. Said, the 988 number is really not well-known to everyone in this city. And the fact that the 911 will not divert, or did not, in the case of my sister, diverted to the crisis center. She was a loving, kind person. She raised her son to be respectable. She was a major part of our family. And because of that, we suffer with the trauma of seeing it played out on television over and over again, to hear others talk about it. And as we sit here today making stats known, we need to do more than just talk about stats and things that are on paper. Our policemen have to get some sort of training that they will know what to do in a situation like this, rather than the first thought would be to pull out their service revolvers to try to get a situation under hand that should have not gotten out of control. And they should have called for backup, for some help, for someone to tell them what to do other than to kick the door in and go in and pull out their service revolver on a 70-year-old woman who, with bricks in her pockets, weighed less than 100 pounds, that was wheeling or had armed herself with a knife because someone had entered her domains, who she did not invite, who she did not know why they were there. No one explained to her. The only thing that she heard was, "Put down the knife." You and I, male and female, that's in this room tonight, would have taken a defensive position when someone broke your door in and you did not invite them. It doesn't matter what color you are. It doesn't matter what religion you are. Everyone deserves to be treated fairly. And each situation needs to be assessed as to what needs to be done to get the situation underhand. We cannot keep allowing our citizens, our seniors, to those with mental health issues to keep being murdered because they don't know how to respond to a situation that they are in and they don't know why the policeman is at her door. She didn't call. And so, the question that needs to be answered is, who called? And if that individual called, they needed to express that this is a serious mental health issue. It is fact that they had been called to Caution's House more than 21 times. That in itself should have said, since we know we've been here before, that we must handle it in a different way. We need to get someone that knows how to deal with this situation other than police officers who are not equipped or trained adequately enough. And a day of training, a couple hours of training, is not sufficient enough to deal with a situation of that magnitude. And we must do something other than have these hearings, other than talk about it. There needs to be some action. There needs to be something taking place within our police department, with our health department, with our first responders, so that we will not have this to repeat itself on and on again. And I'm not just speaking on behalf of, for my family, but for the families in the future who will have to deal with a mental health crisis. And members, President Cohen and members of the City Council, they are persons who may sit beside us tonight who could, in some way, have some sort of mental issue that we are not aware of because they are not acting it out. Does not necessarily mean that all of us that look good, smell good, and talk good have the right frame of mind and that they don't have issues that they possibly are ashamed of or some issues that they have not dealt with within themselves to seek the help. And so, I implore you, I beg of you, to do more with this situation-- excuse me, with this situation for the sake of the citizens of Baltimore City. In every district, in every color, in every gender, something must be done other than what we are seeing played out repeatedly over and over again. This system has to be more than on paper. It has to be more to say, "We have it." What good is it to have it, and it does not work? That is merely unacceptable. It should not be acceptable to the council. It should not be acceptable to the commissioner. It should not be acceptable to the Health Department. It should not be acceptable to the mayor's office or anyone else in authority in this city. It needs to be dealt with, not tomorrow, next week, next year. It is imperative that there is some immediate action to take place. Thank you, President Cohen, again, and members of the City Council.
Thank you, Bishop Spriggs, for your persistence, for speaking on behalf of your family. And just know that we grieve with you and the entire city grieves with you. And the purpose of tonight is to ensure that we have the systems in place to stop what we've seen happen from happening again. So, your words are impactful and meaningful and appreciated by this body. Thank you. We will now invite members of our community leader panel and advocates who will provide perspectives on this issue from community. We are going to start with Jasmine Pope. Ms. Pope, if you could, just press the red button and then introduce yourself.
Hi, everyone. My name is Jasmine Pope. I am a member of the Trauma Informed Care Task Force as well as a Director of Programs and Strategic Partnerships at the University of Maryland Baltimore and have been working with the task force since 2021. So, the Trauma Informed Care Task Force took on getting more resources for Baltimore Crisis Response in 2022. And it seems that even with the funding that was provided, there is still a need for greater capacity. I've worked in Baltimore City for a long time. I started here in college and fell in love with the city. And Baltimore Crisis Response has been an organization that I've used several times. I've had to make calls to Baltimore Crisis Response for clients that I've had. And the program is amazing in the ability to meet someone in a moment of crisis and provide comfort in a situation that normally could not end that way. And so, the need for this resource is essential. And the research behind this working and breaking down the silos is essential to the task force. Looking at where resources already are and how silos are existing and why they are and breaking them down is one of the things that has to happen. Baltimore is a city that is rich in a lot of things and culture. The people are amazing. We have a lot of resources. Making those resources work in harmony is something that we have to be dedicated to because when we're setting them up in silos, as we see, we're not able to reach the folks who need it the most.
Thank you so much, Jasmine, and thank you for your work on the Trauma Informed Care Task Force and for the University of Maryland. Appreciate what you do. Next, we'll hear from Jamal Turner from the PAB. Mr. Turner?
Good evening, City Council President Cohen, council members, community members, and members of law enforcement, and, most importantly, the families who have experienced unimaginable loss. My name is Jamal Turner, and today, I speak not just as the Chair of the Police Accountability Board, but as a Baltimorean. We are here partially today because in a span of just eight days this summer, three Baltimore residents, Mr. Abdullah, Mr. Melton Jr., and Ms. Brooks, lost their lives following encounters with police during suspected mental health crises. First and foremost, we must acknowledge the profound grief of the family who just spoke. Ms. Brooks, we mourn with you. No one should ever have to lose their life because they were experiencing a mental health crisis and reached out for help. We are here today because something is fundamentally wrong with how our city handles behavioral health emergencies, and we cannot allow it to continue. We have to ask ourselves, how did these three precious lives slip through the cracks of a system meant to protect and help them? The families of Mr. Abdullah, Mr. Melton, and Mrs. Brooks are demanding answers and action. We owe it to them and to all of our grieving neighbors to transform our crisis response so that no one else dies in the very moments when they most need compassion and care. A key failure we must confront is the lack of adequate training and preparedness within the BPD. Only 23% of BPD patrol officers have been CIT certified, falling short of that 30% target. target and illustrating a wider gap in crucial skills. Under the current policy, CIT training is voluntary, treated as a specialized assignment for a select few. But as one former BPD commander aptly asked, why shouldn't all officers be provided with this training? Every day, police encounter individuals in mental distress. Every officer should be equipped to handle these situations with skill and empathy. It is unacceptable that more than three quarters of our patrol officers lack the 40-hour training and de-escalation, suicide intervention, and behavioral health response that CIT certification provides. This gap has real consequences on the street. I want to acknowledge that I've spoken directly with Commissioner Worley about this issue. He shared that BPD has a similar goal to ensure every single officer is CIT trained. On this, the Police Accountability Board agrees 100%. But the questions remain, how will we make this happen? How long will it take to get there? And what resources and leadership commitments are we willing to put behind it? Every day we delay, we risk another tragedy. This cannot be a five-year goal. Baltimore needs a timeline and a plan to make CIT universal now. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Turner. And last but not least, from the Citizens Policing Project, we have Ray Kelly. Mr. Kelly?
Good evening, President Cohen and members of the citizens. Better? Good evening, everyone. Thank you, President Cohen and members of city council, for this opportunity to share my voice. My name is Ray Kelly, Executive Director of the Citizens Policing Project, a member organization of the Campaign for Justice, Safety, and Jobs Coalition, and I am also the facilitator of the Baltimore Community Commission on Public Safety and Policing, who has been committed to continued discussion and engagement on alternatives to law enforcement for years. As we've heard, just this summer, three lives were tragically lost at the hands of the police department during potential behavioral health crises. These were preventable deaths. Additionally, the mass overdose that pinned off underscored the devastating consequences of a fragmented and reactive system. These incidents are not isolated. They are symptoms of a broader failure to provide cohesive, collaborative, and community centers' responses to crisis. Despite the city's commendable efforts such as embedding behavioral health clinicians and call centers, expanding mobile crisis services, and launching diversion dashboards, we find ourselves in an all-too-familiar position when it relates to alternatives to law enforcement. And our communities continues to experience fractured and inequitable support. When crises occur, there is no clear, uniform procedure to ensure residents are met with care, not harm. Families are left confused, services remain opaque, and the system lacks the transparency and accountability needed to rebuild trust. The urgency of this moment cannot be overstated. Lives are at stake. We must act decisively, act decisively to close the gaps in our behavioral health crisis response. Our community commission held many listening sessions and public forums, and six key concerns continue to emerge from the community. One is public education and navigation support. Families are often left to navigate, navigate a labyrinth of services during moments of crisis. They don't know whether to call 988 or 911. Most don't even know that 988 is a thing or what it's for. There are no guarantees of the kind of response their loved ones will receive. This confusion can lead to unnecessary police involvement and tragic outcomes. Number two, opaque and fragmented wraparound services. Residents are often being referred to services without clear guidance on what they are, who qualifies, and how to access them. The lack of transparency further erodes trust and perpetuates cycles of crisis. Third is the lack of community-owned accountability. The diversion dashboard provides numbers, but not the human stories behind them. We don't know what happens to those that are diverted, what constitutes a successful diversion, or whether the system is truly working for them. Fourth is the lack of prevention and early intervention infrastructure. Nearly all crisis responses remain reactive. There are no neighborhood-based wellness supports, youth-specific outreach programs, or spaces to build resilience before emergencies, emergencies occur. A major concern raised by residents and stakeholders is the lack of coordination and communication between the various agencies involved in behavioral health crisis response. This fragmentation leads to duplicated efforts, gaps, gaps in service delivery, and confusion for those seeking support. Without a unified support, without a unified approach, the system struggles to provide seamless and effective care. And lastly, limited civic inclusion and decision-making. Impacted communities are still sidelined in the decision-making process. Those with lived experiences, particularly from historically disinvested neighborhoods, must have a binding voice in shaping the systems that are created to serve them. To address these concerns, we recommend these community-rooted solutions. One, host quarterly resource nights at schools, libraries, churches, or whatever, and provide plain language caregiver toolkits to empower residents with knowledge of diversion options, proactive and follow-up services. Two, create a public searchable digital map of behavioral health system resources, including eligibility rules and contact information to foster trust and autonomy in the healing process. Include first-person testimonials, repeat call tracking, and resolution timelines in public dashboards to capture the deeper impact of diversion efforts. Fourth, establish city-funded mental health wellness hubs in high-needs neighborhoods, co-led by peers and clinicians, clinicians, to provide proactive, culturally competent care through walk-in support, trauma workshops, and youth programming. Form a standing community oversight committee with binding authority to review implementation plans, funding allocations, and diversion data, ensuring transparency, equity, and accountability. And we highly recommend convening an immediate inter-agency summit to define, to define the specific roles and responsibilities of each organization involved in, in crisis response. This summit should prioritize the development of collaborative framework that includes shared protocols, communication channels, and mechanisms for mutual support, as well as regular follow-up meetings should be scheduled to ensure accountability and continuous improvements. These recommendations are not just technical fixes, they are urgent, lifesaving measures. The tragedies we've witnessed demand bold action and commitment to transforming crisis response system into one that prioritizes care, compassion, and community. The conversation needs to start now, and I'll quote Ms. Janet Bailey, "right now." We can't afford to wait. Every day that passes without changes puts our lives at risk. We stand ready to partner with the city to ensure that no more lives are lost to preventable failures. Together, we can build a Baltimore where every resident is met with dignity and support in their moments of greatest need. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Jasmine Pope, Jamal Turner, Ray Kelly. Thank you for supporting this hearing and for the ongoing work that you all do. It is very much appreciated. We are now going to turn to our government panel, who I believe will be introduced by Deputy Mayor Girassa. Deputy Mayor, this panel will have 12 minutes. We will be keeping a shot clock, so please do not feel in any way disrespected, but we are big on keeping on time. So I will now turn it over to Deputy Mayor Letitia Girassa.
Thank you, Council President Cohen, fellow council members, as well as the public who have come out tonight. I think we all hear this call to action and very much appreciate the opportunity to discuss what the agencies have done, but to also work in partnership on ways that we can improve the system. We know that there are opportunities to, to make changes, and we look forward to the questions, we look forward to being thoughtful in how we talk about the system and the work that we're doing to improve it so that it works well for everyone. With that, I will turn it over to our Law Department.
Thank you very much, Deputy Mayor, and Mr. Council President, members of the council. I want to speak on behalf of the Law Department, but I first want to just echo everything the Deputy Mayor said. I want to really honor the really powerful testimony that we've already heard today and thank everyone who did come out and speak to that. And while, as the Council President did note, we are out of respect for the investigative process, it's important that we aren't talking about any particular case, your presence here does reinforce the, the significance of this work. So I just want to be mindful of the time limits. I'm going to talk briefly about the consent decree, which is a sort of an important framework for a lot of the behavioral health work that does happen in the city that has been happening for the past seven or eight years since 2017. So very briefly, as many folks in this room will be aware, the city and the Justice Department entered into a consent decree back in 2017, targeted mainly at, at completely overhauling the police department, and touched on a, literally every single aspect of the police department. One of the specific aspects of the consent decree relates to behavioral health, and there are specific provisions in the consent decree that create requirements both for the police department, but also for non-law enforcement agencies in the city. And so you hear people reference paragraph 97, there's, you know, more than 500 paragraphs in the consent decree that cover a range of topics. Paragraph 97 is the paragraph that references the city's responsibility, the non-law enforcement agencies in the city, their responsibilities to help make improvements in the behavioral health ecosystem in, in Baltimore City. Now, paragraph 97 itself is a little bit vague, there's not a lot of detail in it. All it says is basically that the city is going to conduct a gaps analysis of behavioral health issues and, and then ultimately recommend solutions and assist in their implementation. So not a lot of detail there. In 2023, the city and the Justice Department entered into a, an agreement that basically fleshed that out, that provided much more specific guidance about what that meant, what the requirements are. And so that was an agreement that the, that the parties entered into in 2023 that really provides the framework for a lot of the work that the city is doing around behavioral health. There's seven different sections of that. Those include 911 diversion, which is a big part of what we'll talk about tonight, also mobile crisis teams, peer support, housing and homeless services, Sentinel Event Review, which is a separate process that includes reviewing specific, specific incidents and using them as a, as a framework to discuss systems-wide changes, also quality assurance, and finally, the city's relationship with Behavioral Health Systems Baltimore. So with that, obviously, I'm here to answer any questions, and we can talk in more detail about any of those, but I want to turn it over to keep the process, the presentation going.
I think up next, we have Director Reddick from 911.
Good evening, Council President and members of the council. I am Director Tania Reddick for the 911 Center for the City of Baltimore, and today I'll be sharing how Baltimore's 911-988 diversion program works, and why it matters, and how standardized tools support this critical effort. This program is all about making sure the right responses is sent at the right time for the right situation. The 911-988 diversion program was created because not every emergency requires police, fire, or EMS. Many of the 911 calls received involve people experiencing behavioral health crises. In those situations, the most effective response is not always an ambulance or a police officer, it's a trained clinician. Diversion allows us to connect these callers directly from mental health professionals who can provide immediate support, resources, and follow-up care. This ensures that individuals in crisis receive the right help at the right time, reduces unnecessary emergencies, unnecessary emergency response, and ease the workload of first responders. To make this program safe and consistent, we use the International Academies of Emergency Dispatch protocols. The IAD protocols provide evidence-based protocols that standardize how we ask questions, evaluate the risk, and determine the best response. Instead of relying on guesswork, our specialists follow structured scripts. This ensures accuracy, fairness, and safety for every caller. One of the most important IED tools for this program is the 25 card. The 25 card is the standard protocol for psychiatric abnormal behavior and suicide-related calls. It gives our specialists a step-by-step guide to ask the right questions, assess the severity of the situation, decide whether the call can be safely diverted to 988 or co notified with responders, or require an immediate emergency response. This ensures we're not improvising, but instead following an international-recognized, evidence-based system that protects caller safety and support consistent operations. The call flow. When 911 calls come in, and every step is, the first step is triage. At this step, the call taker uses the 25 card to guide the conversation. This is critical because the information gathered from the caller determine what happens next. The specialist must listen carefully, ask descriptive questions, and compare key details. For example, for the 25 card, you might hear someone asking you, are you thinking about harming yourself? Is there anyone with you right now? Do you have access, do you have access to weapons? There's several other questions on there, but I just kind of gave you a synopsis of what you'll hear in the 25 card. This is, there are strict criterias for this diversion. The caller must be at least 12 years old, and only first and second-party callers are eligible, meaning that persons in crisis themselves or someone directly with them. The third-party callers, like a neighbor calling from across the street that's inside the house, or someone that's driving past and no longer has information, will not be considered for the diversion. With third-party callers, the information is indirect, which means we cannot confidently connect the person in crisis to a clinician without sending emergency response. Once triage is completed from the flow, once triage is completed, calls can follow different If the criterias are met, the call can be transferred to 988. There you go. If criterias are met, the call can be transferred to 988 or a in-house clinician. And as of right now, we have two in-house clinicians that are located within the Emergency Communication Center. They're not only there for the behavioral crisis callers, but also there for the mental support of every, every 911 specialist that's inside our Emergency Communication Center. If a risk is present, the call must be co notified, keeping 988 on the line while EMS or police are dispatched. And if the call is high-acute, like someone is unconscious, dispatch for an emergency response happens. The triage is most critical moment. Accurate information ensures the right resources are delivered. These slides show the different call types we may receive and how they are categorized. Diversion calls, example includes a person with suicidal thoughts but still alert, or someone with a mental health history who is non-suicidal. These can be directly transferred to 988 or the in-house clinician. Co notified calls, they're the higher-risk calls. They're like someone who ingested medication, or someone's threatening to jump, or someone that is violent. In these cases, EMS or police are dispatched, but they, in these cases, police and fire are dispatched. Emergency response call, they're life-threatening, like near, hanging, unconscious, or serious hemorrhaging. They also go straight to fire, EMS, or police. The triage questions and IED coding guide that decisions so we can respond quickly and safely. In closing, the 988 diversion program ensures people in crisis get the right help at the right time. By relying, relying on the IAD protocols and the 25 card-- By relying on the IAD protocols and the 25 card, our specialists ask the right questions, assess risks, and flow clear criteria to determine whether a call can be diverted, co notified, or handled by an emergency. This approach improves outcomes for individuals in crisis, strengthens the public safety, and helps first responders stay focused on emergencies that truly require their expertise. Thank you.
Thank you, Director Reddick. I'm going to remind our agencies that we are short on time and pass it over to Chief Matts of Fire.
Good evening, Council President Cohen, ladies and gentlemen of the City Council. Thank you for taking the time to see me this evening. For the record, my name is James Matts. I'm the Assistant Chief of EMS with the Fire Department. And I was asked briefly to talk about the role of the Fire Department and some of the things that we're seeing. Understand first that our first and primary role were the first medical contact for individuals in crisis. What does that mean? That means we're called to provide either advanced life support or basic life support at the scene of medical conditions as well as traumatic conditions. We also provide support along BPD and crisis intervention teams, and we also provide a bridge to health and social services. Some of those things we do, we leave behind some additional resources, as well as 988 flyers for some of the patients we see. EMS care in Maryland is rendered in accordance with Maryland state guidelines. They call it protocol. Here's an example of the protocol page just for that. The key to all these protocols across the board is safety, safety first. The other thing we have to do is rule out medical causes. There are a lot of medical conditions that can cause people to appear to have a behavioral health crisis. Some of these incidences are like neurologic disturbances like seizures, stroke, trauma, metabolic disturbances like hyper- and hypoglycemia, electrolyte imbalances, or sepsis, or infection. There's also environmental problems from hyper- and hypothermia, as well as toxins like alcohol or a drug. Once we do that, we go ahead and we provide a standardized patient assessment, we evaluate the patient on a medical head-to-toe assessment, and we provide a medical exam to identify concurrent medical issues. The thing to remember, a lot of times when we go to these calls, patients want to say, I don't want help, I don't need help. The Maryland Medical Protocol actually has a strict criteria that we follow for people to be able to refuse. What does that mean? We have to be able to evaluate people for capacity. What is capacity? Capacity is that you have, you're of sound mind that you can make a sound medical decision.
Colleagues, I will note that the 12 minutes has elapsed. Deputy Mayor Girassa, I'm going to extend the time a little bit, but I would ask that folks be direct and brief. Thank you. Back to you, Dr. Lawrence.
Thank you very much. Sure. Whoop, you took me away that fast. There we go. So our protocol actually goes as far as there's actually a checkoff sheet where we have to go ahead and evaluate people for the ability of capacity. We look for people to be able to understand person, place, and time. You may hear different things where people say, who's the president? How many quarters earn a dollar? Things of that nature to get real-time identified, the status of the patient. There we go. The Fire Department actually went so far as we actually created a manual procedure, a policy and procedure for these types of calls. It's the key to us is to establish capacity. We cannot leave somebody on the scene that doesn't have capacity or the ability to make a sound medical decision for themselves. What are we doing, what do we do in addition to that? We also coordinate with BPD crisis intervention teams. We coordinate with BCRI. We also work with 988. We also do real-time consultations, if necessary, with medical doctors, at area EDs, and we have shared protocols for transfers between EMS as well as behavioral crisis. Some of the challenges that we've been seeing recently is the high call volume of repeat offenders. Our super-user population, we just ran a report.
Ma'am, 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 I appreciate it. We're going to let the agencies finish. Thank you.
We have instances in just the last two months alone where eight people were responsible for 321 calls. We have to go ahead and identify, and a lot of times, those kind of super-users, frequent flyers, loyal customers, a lot of times, mental health is one of those first priorities there. In addition to mental health, there's also comorbid things that are going on. We also have a limited capacity in crisis stabilization facilities. There's also tends to be an extended offload with psychiatric patients, which means it takes us longer to get out of the hospitals. And then one of the other things that we're seeing frequently is there's an evolving pharmacology and toxicology going on, evident from North and Pennsylvania Avenue, some of the recent drugs that we've seen. Some emerging trends that we've been seeing, this is my last slide, we're seeing an increase in these comorbid type calls like I was speaking of earlier. It isn't just a mental health problem. There could be a mental health problem, there can be some comorbid medical conditions going on, and we have to sort our way through that. There's also been more youth behavioral type of calls, and in response to that, some of the diversion expansion is expanding to kids that are 12 years and older. There's been a greater demand on non-hospital crisis. We've also been able to expand telehealth and telemedicine for these types of calls. And then lastly, our nurse navigation program that we're just starting up helps to aid with this diversion. And at that, I'll pass it over.
Thank you, Chief. Commissioner Worley.
Good evening. Chief Shannon Sullivan with the Baltimore Police Department.
Major Derek Luffler with the Baltimore Police Department.
We will be very brief. What you see here in front of you are some of the policies related to behavioral health calls for service. We develop these policies extensively with Behavioral Health Collaborative, as well as community members. They were just updated recently, and they really emphasize minimizing police response where appropriate, and of course, de-escalation, trauma-informed care, and the proper procedures in order for us to follow the Maryland guidelines as it relates to emergency petitions. All of this is reemphasized in training, and I will turn that over to Major Luffler. I don't know where this.
So as you can see here is an overview of our training. All BPD officers in the academy receive 24 hours of behavioral health awareness training. And then every year, annually, all officers receive eight hours of reoccurring behavioral health training. There is training for 911 call specialists and police dispatchers. Our CIT program is a 40-hour course for officers to receive. It is a voluntary program that officers have to volunteer to participate in on an annual, each year. We offer that course about six times per year. Our crisis response team is our co-response model. They are, it's an officer that's paired with a clinician from BCRI. They receive additional training, specialized training with BCRI along the way. So annually, all officers do receive reoccurring behavioral health training. As you can see here, and as was pointed out, there are CIT-trained patrol officers, 24% of BPD patrol officers are CIT-certified. This year, we have six CIT classes in 2025 that are scheduled. And for this year's annual behavioral health training, we have trained 60% of BPD members. We are on track to complete training 100% of our officers by the end of the year, as required.
Aside from, go ahead.
Okay. This is a flow chart on BPD's response to a behavioral health crisis. We have an individual in crisis. Our emphasis is always on the least police-involved response in trying to connect people to resources. I want to go through this flow chart by each step, but our emphasis is to connect people to resources, community-based resources through 988, so we can connect people to the resources that they need and avoid connecting people to an emergency room where appropriate.
Another important piece of this is data besides the policy and training. So this is an example of some of the data that BPD provides. We produce reports twice a year. We go over this data even in draft form in public available meetings with the collaborative. In fact, the next one is September 23 at 2:00 p.m. And we do this every other month. I believe it's the third Thursday of the month, and those invites are sent out through the mayor's office. But it's a public, it's a public meeting, and all of this information is on BPD's website. And then lastly, we have multiple accountability mechanisms. We have to look at the data, we have to look at the incidents, and BPD does that in a variety of ways, including our behavioral health interactions, our special investigation response team, PRB, and other methods.
Great, thanks. Now I'll pass it over to Acting Commissioner Taylor.
Good evening, Council President Cohen, council members. I'm going to give you a brief overview of the Health Department's role in crisis response. This is what I'm going to talk about. And right here, we'll take a brief look at the current behavioral health ecosystem. While deeply complex, this gives a, I am so sorry. While deeply complex, this gives a streamlined view of the major players of the ecosystem and how they relate. The promising news is that there are multiple stakeholders pulling together to serve Baltimoreans. Now let's talk about CHD's direct role in crisis response, which normally has to do with helping with overdose spike alerts. The history of overdose spike alerts dates back to 2016. At that time, the Health Department and the Baltimore City Fire Department set up a joint system to detect and respond to spikes in overdoses. As you can see on this flow diagram, each day, the Fire Department shares non-fatal overdose data with us. Our epidemiology team analyzes the number and creates daily cluster reports that flag any unusual increases for people who have experienced non-fatal overdoses. When we spot a spike, we send those reports to a group of approved partner organizations, and they use that information to guide their outreach, which includes distributing naloxone, connecting people to services, and responding directly in the areas that are most affected. Since 2015, the Health Department has distributed nearly 150,000 doses of naloxone and trained over 50,000 people on how to use it. We do this in many ways. First and foremost, through trainings by request, which is where we see the largest volume of naloxone going out. Second, through our routine services at scheduled sites. These are our regular operations where clients come to us for things like syringe exchange and other harm reduction services. Naloxone distribution happens here, too, but it's more of a steady flow rather than large numbers. And third, through pop-ups, also called backpacking or street outreach, where our teams go directly into neighborhoods to reach people where they are. Now, looking at these maps, the map on the left shows EMS data, specifically rates of non-fatal overdose reversals across different parts of the city. And the reason why we, as a Health Department, wanted to show you this map is important to note that the Health Department currently, because of data use agreements with the Maryland Department of Health, is not allowed to show you a map of where non-fatal overdoses are happening, or even fatal overdoses are happening in the city. This is the closest representation to non-fatal overdoses that we can show you currently. The map on the right shows you the Health Department's naloxone distribution and training map, but we do not have a map currently of all of the other naloxone that is being distributed by other community-based organizations. Now I want to take a brief moment to describe our new division of public behavioral health that the Health Department has been working diligently to create in response to the opioid epidemic and the needs of our community at large. Our current behavioral health programs, services focus on four, the four areas that you see on the slide. Training and education, data and strategy, that's a big one, harm reduction, and improving treatment. And the Health Department's new division will go even further to enhance current efforts while recognizing the great need to take a life-course approach to addressing behavioral health. Some highlights include an expansion of our existing spot van services and additional resources to include staff to ensure our youngest and oldest Baltimoreans get the behavioral health supports they need. But most important is the fact that as a new division within the Health Department, this is a living, breathing, flexible representation of what's possible when the community comes together to solve a highly complex public health issue. In closing, the Health Department has been deeply committed to getting our community on track to have stronger behavioral health supports to include overdose prevention partners, tools, and resources for those who need it most. This work is a core part of our current overdose prevention work, and it's something we approach with urgency, strategy, and strong partnerships to go even further and comprehensively. At the end of the day, it's about meeting people where they are, whether that's through a scheduled service site, a pop-up on the street, or a training. And we will continue pushing forward using data and community feedback to guide our work and make sure our resources are reaching the people in places that need them most. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Taylor. We have one final presentation from Director Whaley of the Baltimore City Mayor's Office of Overdose and Recovery.
Hey, Shorty, and members of the public, we are going to respect all the agency heads, and then we will have questions from the council, and then time for testimony from the public. Director Whaley, the floor is yours.
Thank you. Thank you, Council President and council members, for the opportunity today to talk about how the B.C. Moore Office is using the opioid restitution funds to support the behavioral health work in Baltimore City. So we've heard a lot today about the different parts of the ecosystem. Louder? Okay. The different parts of the ecosystem, including the crisis response, but there are other components of the behavioral health system, including proactive and upstream engagement, non-emergency response, and ongoing care. So pieces of this, the proactive engagement or outreach services, again, is upstream, preventing crisis before it happens. From the opioid restitution fund, we have two grant agreements that have been signed already. One is with Charm City Care Connection and Be More Power, both of whom who meet individuals where they are in the community and provide harm reduction supplies and referrals to services. For a non-emergent response, this is a timely response for individuals who request services when this is not an emergency. We are working on building out two initiatives. One of them is 24/7 outreach, and the other is B-COR. I'm going to go into more detail on those two initiatives in my next slide. For the crisis response system, so responding to emergency behavioral health needs, we are supporting an organization called the Maryland Coalition of Family to have peer support, family peer support specialists on the crisis response teams. Those peer, family peer support specialists will help the family members if they're the ones calling or they're on scene of a behavioral health crisis. And then we have several providers that we haven't signed grant agreements yet that will be part of the follow-up services, so ensuring that there are effective connections to care. And I want to note that the B.C. Moore Office is working really hard to ensure that there's coordination and collaboration through all of our grantees, other community-based organizations, and the city agencies that are providing services within this ecosystem. So just giving a little bit more detail on 24/7 outreach. This came directly from the work of the Behavioral Health Collaborative in response to paragraph 97 of the consent decree, and ensures that the right response is available for every call. So some of these calls are not emergencies, which we've heard about the different criteria of when the different teams go out. There are many calls where there's assistance that's being requested for individuals, and it's not considered a crisis. So this 24/7 outreach program would allow for teams to be deployed to connect people to services. It's built off of successful national models and the SAMSA criteria for the Crisis Now model, which would include components of someone to call, a person to respond, and somewhere for that individual to go. And this is a $15 million investment. This is still in the development phase, but we're close to kind of outlining what this will look like in the city and then implementation. The other one that I want to highlight is the B-COR initiative. This is, B-COR stands for Baltimore Comprehensive Overdose Response to End the Epidemic. This is really focused on the treatment side of the overdose crisis, and it's a partnership between the University of Maryland, Baltimore, Johns Hopkins School of Medicine, the Baltimore City Fire Department, and People Encouraging People, and has five key components, again, really focused on expanding access to treatment and creating low-barrier care and supports. And so those are listed here. They include a telemedicine line, improving standards. so improving the continuity of care for referrals. It would expand the Baltimore City Health Department's population health team and would create a new team of community connection providers, which would do that follow-up care when people are connected to resources. And that's all I have. Thank you.
That concludes city agency presentations.
Thank you, Commissioner Girasa. We will hear briefly from Behavioral Health Services Baltimore as well as Baltimore Crisis Response before questions from the council. Krista Taylor, Director, please proceed. I also do want to recognize with us today from the Mayor's Office, Tyler Schnella, J.D. Merrill, Director Ernestine Simmons. I see Director Mavronis here as well, and thank you all. Krista, Director Taylor, please take it away.
Oh, sorry, not good at this. Thank you for having me here today, Council President Cohen, and for every member of the council. Also want to thank you, Council President Cohen, for having this hearing and for calling out and promoting 988 from the very beginning and from the very start of this meeting. So thank you. For the record, my name is Krista Taylor. I'm the President and CEO of Behavioral Health System Baltimore, often called BHSB, which is probably how you know us. Next slide, I don't... I don't have the...okay, great, thank you. BHSB is a nonprofit organization that serves as a local behavioral health authority for Baltimore City. What this means is that we partner with Baltimore City and the Maryland Department of Health to oversee and manage the public behavioral health system. BHSB's role in the crisis response system is to oversee, procure, and manage funding for service delivery, advocate for change that is needed, collaborate with city and other stakeholders to build local partnerships and coordinate efforts, and educate the public on how to access care. There we go. As Director Whaley mentioned, the Crisis Now model, someone to call, someone to respond, and somewhere to go. Infrastructure development over the last several years has used this National Crisis Now model as a framework. For someone to call, the 988 helpline is a centralized way to access help in Baltimore City. The line answers more than 4,000 calls per month and uses tools like open access scheduling and a bed registry to facilitate linkage to care. 91% of 988 calls are resolved on the phone. BHSB partners closely with the Mayor's Office, the Health Department, and other stakeholders to promote 988. It engages with the community to raise awareness and receive feedback to continuously shape engagement efforts. This slide here represents data on calls over the last two years, and it does show that there has been growth in 988. The infrastructure development for someone to respond has focused on mobile crisis response. Crisis response teams include a peer and a clinician who respond in the community. Teams provide an assessment, counseling, and fast connection to ongoing care. Teams serve people across the lifespan and run 24/7. There are also specialty teams for children and youth and clinician officer teams, and a triage matrix is used to guide deployment of the right kind of response. Mobile crisis services are specialty behavioral health services. It is not an immediate emergency response like police and fire. The national and state standard for mobile crisis response is one hour or less. And as the council president said in the beginning with the opening remarks, we still have some significant work to do in the city. Only 50% of visits in Baltimore City meet the standard. This slide shows the mobile request volume over the last year. There are typically more than 150 dispatches per month. This is the data, again, that depicts the response time. And this slide shows the outcome of mobile crisis visits. The majority of mobile crisis visits are resolved without the need to go to an emergency room. The council has this in your packet, and it details current places where people can go for immediate, community-based help. And also in your packet are the multiple things in place to promote accountability, collaboration, and coordination. The others presenting before me went over most of these items, but what I do want to highlight is that the police have a direct line to 988. This is also more accountability and coordination information. So opportunities. A lot of work has been done over the last several years to strengthen the crisis response infrastructure in the city. There is significant opportunity to build upon this work to better serve people. There is also significant opportunity to address the workforce shortage for community-based behavioral health care. First and most importantly, for someone to call, we all can promote 988 wherever and whenever we can. For someone to respond, we highly recommend that Baltimore City explore the feasibility of alternative emergency response teams, train professional community responders like in Denver or Albuquerque. We also recommend that we improve the use of the police clinician teams and actively pursue workforce development for community-based crisis work. And lastly, for somewhere to go, there are several things that can be done to build out community-based places where people can go to receive immediate care, things like stabilization centers, peer respite services, and drop-in centers. And we also see significant opportunity and outreach for proactive engagement before a crisis occurs. Thank you.
Good evening, city council and community members. Thanks for convening this conversation. My name is Jonathan Davis, and I am the Executive Director for Baltimore Crisis Response, Inc. We are an independent nonprofit that act as a vendor for both BHSB and the city to support crisis work within Baltimore City. Our specific role within the crisis response, we staff the embedded clinicians in the 911 call center. We also train police officers and provide education on behavioral health interventions. We also staff the clinician for the crisis response team. We are one of the providers for mobile response in the city, and we are the administrator and also one of the operators for the 988 helpline. We also have a opioid response team that is now responding to the population health team with EMS. I would talk briefly on what happens when a call comes to 988. It is super important that we have a triage in place to make sure that people get the right fit response for their need. So we instituted a 988 triage matrix that is designed to ensure fairness, improve efficiency, and unify crisis response across the region, shifting from an ad hoc, judgment-based dispatching to a structured, coordinated, and outcome-focused system. The 988 call center counselors use the Central Maryland 988 triage matrix as a decision support tool to determine the most appropriate response for persons in crisis. This triage tool is beneficial to the system because it ensures standard decisions, it ensures equitable access to services, and it ensures that we are using our resources efficiently. And also, it supports a coordinated system response. So how does the counselor use the triage matrix? When someone called into 988, the counselor then gathers information through structured questioning. Then also, they would match the information from the call to specific matrix criteria. As Krista mentioned earlier, 90% of the calls are resolved at the call center level. That would be Level 1, where there's low risk, and callers can be stabilized and de-escalated with call center support only. Level 2 is when there's moderate risk to the caller, and it's unsafe but no immediate danger. We can then send out a mobile response team if we cannot resolve the call at the call center level. Level 3 is a co-response, or we send the call back to EMS. That include any call that includes any level of violence. We cannot send civilian teams into environments where there's violence. Lasting the interest of time, to ensure that we are navigating well through our capacity and making sure that there are good response times, we are using data to more strategically dispatch teams. BHSB has a really good heat mapping system where we now know where most of the calls are being called from, and so we are dispatching teams, locating teams within those particular areas so they can have a quicker response. We're also identifying trends within each call, so we know what are the top three needs that people present with. And so we are going into those communities, providing education and training to hopefully mitigate crisis related to those particular presenting problems. We're also increasing our frequency and number of follow-up calls that we have with people that we engage with. We're often finding that, once we have an initial encounter with people, people are not connected to services afterwards. So we are calling those individuals based upon agreed-upon connection times to make sure that they are still well. We're also utilizing remote clinical support when appropriate. We're also, through the support of the opioid restitution funds, adding a family support specialist to our mobile response teams. We know that family members are also struggling and need support, too. And so this new peer family support will be present to help the family as all teams work closely with the identified client. We're also staggering and overlapping shifts to make sure that we have adequate teams during peak times. And we're also establishing career pipelines to local schools, particularly Morgan and University of Maryland Social Work to make sure that we have a good pipeline to ensure that we can staff our programs appropriately. And also, we have a really good working relationship with the Mayor's Office of Employment and Development, who hosts regular, ongoing job fairs just for the work that we do here in the city. Thank you.
Thank you, Director. All right, colleagues, we will now proceed with questions for our agencies as well as our community representatives. I would ask each colleague to limit yourself to two questions. I am going to begin by asking Deputy Mayor Girasa, it appears that very few calls to the 911 system regarding behavioral health issues are actually being diverted to 988. This means that people in crisis and police officers are brought together more often than they should or would be if our diversion system was working as intended. What should we do, both to expand the number of calls eligible for diversion and the number that is actually diverted?
Thank you for that question, Council President. I do actually want to bring in Dr. Launer, who has been really pivotal in how we have developed some of the triage protocols, just to kind of talk through that a little bit, because I think it is a great question and also a really complicated one.
Thank you for the opportunity, and again, very privileged to be here to contribute to what is certainly an ongoing and important discussion. First of all, let me preface this by saying the 911 diversion is a very limited...
You could just say your full name and where you work.
My apologies, Ben Launer. I'm an emergency and EMS physician and medical director for Baltimore City Fire Department. I want to understate or underscore this by saying that the EMS 911 diversion program is by nature a limited endeavor, meaning that it only applies to very specific determinants. So when we talk about, and everybody knows, I think it's been talked about here and acknowledged, that this is certainly not enough. So when you talk about expanding the program, the expansion has to come in more firms, because right now, we're very limited, not only by state law, but by certain criteria that informs what we can divert. So number one, when we say a full diversion, it's important to understand that that is a rare entity where there is a first-person call who is in control, who accepts the help, who does not refuse care. A lot of patients that call 911 have undifferentiated emergencies, and that makes it a little bit more difficult. So the full diversion is the thing that you're capturing, but I also just want to emphasize that there are many other outcomes, meaning you can see there are over 300 instances where people are connected with behavioral health clinicians, and there is complementary response. In terms of how to expand this particular program, I think that, you know, you mentioned earlier the status quo is something nobody would tolerate. Since the inception, we've included not one, but two behavioral health clinicians. The inclusion of a full-time mental health professional that is capable of going outside of protocol and understanding and meeting patients and callers where they are is incredibly helpful, and I think you'll see the numbers increase as we have behavioral health clinicians embedded. The other thing is, quite frankly, expanding it to police determinants. Now, Director Reddick talked about a 25-card. That's limited to somebody saying, "I'm in a behavioral health crisis." And we all know that sometimes patients and callers don't present like that. So when we actually include things like a wellness check or other police determinants, that enables 911 to cast a broader net. So to summarize, I just want to be clear that there are many more things that happen, and the outcomes are much more complicated than just the full diversion. But to expand, President Cohen, I think we're looking at behavioral health clinicians, expanding to police determinants, and most importantly, somebody to respond. Because as you mentioned, if somebody is in immediate crisis, a response paradigm that includes 55 minutes is not enough and is not safe and does not directly meet the patient's needs. So when we talk about somebody to respond, as outlined by Director Whaley, I think that would really help the 911 program connect patients in need to the definitive service.
Yeah, Dr. Launer, I have enormous respect for your work, Dr. Reddick, or Director Reddick as well. It feels a bit of a chicken and an egg here, right? We need to get the calls over to 988, and we need more capacity within BCRI or any of the other responder systems. And so the call tonight is both. Both things need to happen. I need to see more calls diverted from 911 to 988, and we need to have a serious conversation about capacity to respond. My second question, I want to direct to the Police Department. Recognizing that our officers continue to respond to many calls involving behavioral health crises, Baltimore's Police Department must have a best-in-class crisis intervention program. And this must include increasing the number of officers with specialized crisis intervention training. Commissioner Warley, I understand that officers going through the academy do receive baseline training on crisis intervention, but do you believe, and would you commit to, as I do, that every new officer should receive the enhanced 40-hour CIT training while at the academy?
Yes, I agree they should receive it. The reason they don't is because when we developed the model for this, we used the Memphis model, which was basically a voluntary program. We didn't get the numbers that we wanted, so I even offered a take-home vehicle to try to get more people to sign up. They did, not as many as we want. But in order for us to make it mandatory, we have to get the Department of Justice to allow us to change our policy, which shouldn't be a problem. And then we have to make sure the vendors are able to provide the training that we need, because it's a lot of training, and lastly, it's very costly. So all three of those things, but I think every single cop out there should have it.
Understood, and I appreciate that commitment. I look forward to working with you to make that happen, either through legislation or direct partnership. I think it is absolutely critical that when someone becomes a Baltimore City police officer, that they receive in-depth training to be able to respond in a way that is humanizing and that honors the dignity and worth of every single resident in this city, particularly where there is a mental health crisis. So I appreciate that commitment tonight.
Yes, sir, I agree.
I'm going to go to my colleague, Councilmember Bullock.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and I will follow up with the Commissioner. So one of the things that we know in the case of Ms. Brooks, we're not getting into all the details of the case, but in that case, we know that police have been called to that house dozens of times. I'm curious as to what do we do in cases where, what do they call them, a high flyer or whether there are multiple calls? Is there any record of the fact that this is happening? Is there any change in protocol, knowing that there's a high volume of calls in from one location? I'm just curious what the strategy has been and what the strategy moving forward may be.
There is a hazard file, so we can see how many calls. Whether or not the hazard is put out depends on the call. Most of the time, it is. But once we get the call, we have to respond. Once the officer gets there, he has to assess the situation. And then that's, I can't get in much more after that because it's part of the investigation. But yes, it is part of the process.
And that hazard file, where does that live?
Computer in the CAD system.
Okay, and then the follow-up question includes both fire and police. And so in the case of Mr. Melton, then, he was going through a crisis. You have police that respond. They make the call to EMS, but there's a gap in terms of the communication such that there's a significant wait time and then police transport. I know a bit of what happened there, but can you explain for the public what the disconnect was and how we repair that disconnect such that it doesn't happen again?
Sure, our CAD system is many years old, and quite honestly, it's failed about 25 times this year. So what that means is that that night, the CAD... So what that means is that that night, the CAD system had been up and down a couple times, which means it was working and it was down. When it's down, what you have to rely on is someone, 911 call taker, taking the call, basically writing it down and taking it to the dispatcher.
And just, you know, for everybody's edification, you said it went down 25 times this year?
It's been down about 25 times. The Fire Department, you might, you know exactly how many.
And then could you explain what CAD is for the general public?
Yeah. CAD is the computer-aided dispatch. What happens when you call 911, they take the call, they send it to the dispatcher through the CAD system. The CAD system, the dispatcher then dispatches it to an officer. On this night, what happened is, the CAD system had gone down. The police departments had come back up, but the Fire Department's hadn't. So when we were requesting the CAD, the call for the Fire Department, the call went out from us, but it never landed with the Fire Department. So the Fire Department never knew that we were calling for them.
I know it's a major concern for a lot of folks that are here, but thank you for-
How is the system monitored?
I'll ask that question, I moved it to, but no, it's a good question. So again, we talk about the system in terms of computer-aid dispatch. We know that it was down, but you mentioned how it's monitored. So that's part of the question. If you can answer that, I'll just give people a little bit of detail, and I'll rest for now.
Yeah, the system is monitored. First of all, the system is not owned by the Fire Department or the Police Department. It's a city-owned system. So the system is monitored by supervisors who are there. There's 911 supervisors, there's police supervisors, there's fire supervisors, supervisors there. So on nights when the CAD system is up and down, they have to continually adjust. So it was not, apparently, the supervisors on scene did not know, in the communications center, was not aware that both sides were not up. So, the call sat there for a while until the police officers decided to transport themselves.
Thank you, Councilman Bullock. Thank you, Commissioner. I want to recognize Councilman Torrance, who has joined us, and go to Councilmember Ramos.
Thank you, Mr. President. First, I want to just give my condolences to the families who've lost their, has lost their loved ones. My condolences. I want to concentrate on BCRI and the Crisis Response System. You had mentioned that, Mr. Davis, that the BCRI is one of the several partners that are response partners. Can you tell us who else is a crisis response partner?
Councilwoman Ramos, if you don't mind, I'll defer to Krista, who oversees-
Sure.
Yeah.
Sure. Thank you, Jonathan. For the 988 Call Center, there are, it is Baltimore Crisis Response affiliated Sante and Grassroots. For the 988 Call Center, it's three providers, BCRI, affiliated Sante, and Grassroots, that staff together the regional 988 helpline. BCRI is the regional administrative manager for that, managing the contract and the funding that comes from BHSB, and in turn, contracting with Grassroots and Sante. For Mobile Crisis, BCRI is a provider, and affiliated Sante is a provider, and there is a specialty child and youth provider, Advanced Behavioral Health.
So when we're talking about response times from the 988 call or from the 911 call, is that the entire team that we're trying to evaluate, or just BCRI?
The response times that we presented are for any dispatch that happens in Baltimore City, whether it's BCRI or Sante.
Okay. And so, can you let us know why there's such a long response time?
We are digging deep into that right now. It's not acceptable.
Not at all.
It's not, and we are working hard and digging deep. Part of the challenge is, what I mentioned in my talking points, is that the national standard for Mobile Crisis and the state standard, there's regulations now for it, is an hour response time or less.
That's way too long. Crisis doesn't mean an hour.
I completely agree. It's way too long. Mobile Crisis is a specialty behavioral health service. What we really need are alternative community responders that are not police, not fire, but respond immediately, that are trained community responders, like Albuquerque and Denver, who do welfare checks, respond to 911 calls, and are community responders.
So, you said that the standard is an hour. Is that something you're going to try to work with, well, you are BHSB, to work with? I know we're still working on all of the COMAR regulations that are coming out and those kinds of things, to try to reduce that time as a standard?
So the standard for the state is 60 minutes or less in an urban area, and that is in already approved regulations. It's actually a national SAMSS standard. But again, that's for Mobile Crisis Response, which is the specialty behavioral health service. What we really need is something above and beyond that, that some other jurisdictions have, like Albuquerque and Denver, which is a community-based, immediate response.
Well, I guess I'm a little confused, because, if you'll indulge me, Mr. President, a couple of years ago, the President and I, when he was councilman, worked together to advocate to the Mayor's Office to provide BCRI additional dollars to expand capacity. And the intention there, correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. President, was to expand capacities so that you can get to crises, to get to more crises quicker. And so I guess I'm wondering where, what happened there, and what the, if the, it sounds like the infrastructure is a little bit different from when it was two years ago, and we're still not getting the service and response that we had hoped we would get with that additional investment.
Yeah, please go ahead and respond. We do, I want to first thank you for that money. It has helped expand, to get us to where we are today, and more is needed. So, Jonathan, please.
Yeah, I deeply appreciate that investment to BCRI about three years ago. That $1.5 million did fund additional teams for a year. The $1.5 million-
It was just for the year, rather than for, because we were, we, I think, were interested in getting more information about what happened there, so that we can continue to advocate for you and for the team. So, if we know that that additional helped, then I would have hoped that you would have said to us, "Hey, that really helped. We really need to keep going with it," right? That would have been super helpful for us, because we are good advocates, and we would have gotten that for you.
So I did send all of the, the Mayor's Office assigned Montsy as the administrator of those funds, and we sent all of our quarterly reports and updates to Montsy and all of the reports, and they have those. But it funded one year of additional teams. That was really helpful for the system.
It sounds like that's, so then, in addition to getting that back, okay, what, are you recommending then not to fund the BCRI directly, but to create this new infrastructure that you're asking us for, which is this sort of neighborhood, community crisis response? Is that what you called it?
It's alternative response. Quite a few jurisdictions across the country have it.
I know, I know, you said that four times, but I need to know what it is that they're adding to the, what's the infrastructure that's needed?
They're adding a non-clinician team to respond, so peers and trained community providers, to respond immediately, just like police and fire. So it's not a specialty behavioral health service, like a clinician doing a full assessment, connecting people onto care. The crisis teams could come out and respond to that type of team, if that team existed. One of the other things to mention, too, around funding, to just go back for a second, is Medicaid is now in play for Mobile Crisis Response. There are regulations that do have that 60-minute time period, and there is reimbursement for that through Medicaid. So we do need to look at our resources and how we fund this additional type of response that is different than a Mobile Crisis Response.
I guess I'm a little frustrated in that we, if you'll indulge me for a second, that we, you know, have made this investment, but it sounds like that's not, in addition to that layer that has been put together, there's still another set of infrastructure that, this is the first time I'm hearing, and I know I'm not, this isn't my field, as you know, so, that, first time I'm hearing that we actually need, and yet we don't have, which actually, I thought that's what we were investing in, was that community response. And maybe I'm wrong. Mr. President, you were with us on this, I think, but, you know, we would need to know exactly, what does that infrastructure look like? How many people that you need, and what the cost is going to end up being? This is a major priority, and yet, even though we thought we invested in the infrastructure, that is not the right infrastructure we're now hearing three years later.
So that infrastructure helped us while we were waiting for Medicaid reimbursement to sustain the existing Mobile Crisis Services that we have. So it was very helpful, and more is needed. There is still more that's needed, and it has been something that's been talked about in the Behavioral Health Collaborative. So, I would love to be able to work with you and other partners to help figure this out.
Dr. Taylor, what I'm going to ask, as a committee request, is for you to come back to this committee within seven business days with a full report of where we are and where we need to be, and what it would cost. I'm going to ask you to work with the Deputy Mayor Jarassa. I'm going to ask you to work with the Acting Health Commissioner and any other partners in city government. But what I think my colleague is, the frustration that you're hearing from my colleague, I think is shared on this council, that as a council that has advocated hard for additional crisis response resources, we want to know clearly what it would take to get us there. And I would also just note, before I turn to Councilman Torrance, that unfortunately, due to the big hideous bill, we are likely to see significant cuts in Medicaid. And so Medicaid, as a stopgap, as a safeguard, may not be there for folks in our city. And so I just want to acknowledge that, that unfortunately, we are in a moment where the federal government does not have us on these types of initiatives, and we're going to have to be very, very, very creative. Do you want to just briefly wrap it up, Councilmember Ramos?
I think, you know, having that report right away is going to be very important. So, I really appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Torrance?
Thank you, Mr. President. I just have a follow-up to my colleague, Councilwoman Ramos. I have a follow-up to my colleague, Councilwoman Ramos's questions, because we were just presented several weeks ago that there was $10 million going to 988 from the opioid restitution fund. So I want to know how does this overlap with the services? Because being a person who's seen it happening, more likely persons who are in the middle of a crisis, there might be drug-related to this. So I just want to know how is this going to correlate with the program that you're going to receive through $10 million through the opioid restitution fund?
Yeah, if it's okay, I'll have Director Whaley come up and talk about opioid restitution funds.
So the $10 million that is going to BHSB for 988, in the settlement, the specific earmark was for 988 marketing. So we are beholden to what is in the settlement, and so that $10 million is being used to support marketing for 988. So, what BHSB has, what they've laid out is, and what we'll fund through that $10 million is, over a series of years, Baltimore-specific marketing for 988, so that people know the services offered at 988 and why to call.
Councilmember?
It's what's in the settlement, yeah.
Understood. I appreciate that, Director Whaley. I'm going to yield back to my colleague. I will just note that it does create frustration if we're marketing for something that doesn't exist, or doesn't have, excuse me, that doesn't have enough capacity. Apologies, Councilman Torrance, I'll yield back to you.
Thank you, Mr. President. So, that's helpful to understand. Now, my next thing is a committee request. I would like to know, what does scale look like to get to the service level that we need to be, to maintain your Mobile Crisis units, and just be very explicit with it? In addition to that, outside of marketing, what other funds are available to get to that scale within the next six months to a year? Because $10 million for marketing is great, but not having access to the services is different. So I think that I need to know if we have the funds available, because anyone who is most likely experiencing a mental health crisis may also be having that induced by drugs. So I think that there is, there's intersectionality that needs to be addressed through these funds as well.
Councilman, could you provide a timeline for that, or do you want to link it to the previous committee request in seven days?
I'm actually linking it to the previous committee request, because it wasn't specific enough for me. But this, but I would like to know explicitly, what does marketing look like for $10 million over what amount of years as well?
Okay. So, to capture, I heard two things. I heard, one, what does $10 million of marketing cover? And additionally, I heard, what is the scope necessary to get us to a system where people are responding in an adequate time? Is that accurate distillation?
Yes.
Great. Deputy Mayor?
Oh, understood, and certainly appreciate that request. If I might have BCRI, I guess, talk a little bit about that now. I know that we are going to come up with a more formal plan, but I would appreciate if BCRI or BHSB would talk a little bit about what that marketing and why we need to increase marketing.
Before you all get started, can we just clarify, too, that the judge in the settlement earmarked that amount of funding, and that was not a decision or a choice that was, like, made by the city, that that came down through the ruling, that it was earmarked for 988 marketing specifically? I just want, I didn't say that initially, and just wanted to clarify that.
But it sounds like the judge probably didn't understand that we didn't have the infrastructure in place.
Councilmember?
So, thank you, Director Whaley. I will caveat what my colleague said. The judge may have set a floor, but we do not have a ceiling. The question is, how do we go above the floor level to get the services to where it needs to be, to be operationalized, to provide safety? So I just want to be clear, like, I recognize the judge gave you through his order for the settlement, this number. What I'm saying is that not all the funds are here yet, but when we get the funds, there are some dollars that are not restricted, that we can probably use towards getting them to the scale that they need to respond to people. So I just want to be explicit, so that the public understands, like, I recognize that you have been given the floor, but I want to go above the floor and actually build some walls and actual ceilings, so that people can get the services.
Thank you, Councilman Torrance. BCRI, do you want to, Jonathan, do you want to respond quickly?
I would defer to BHSB, because those monies are not coming to BCRI.
Yeah, I'd actually like to call up, if I can, Adrian Bridenstein, the VP of Policy and Communications, who oversees this work for BHSB. She could give you more detail than I can.
Adrian, come on up. If you could, please introduce yourself and where you work.
Great. Good evening, Adrian Bridenstein. I'm the Vice President of Policy and Communications at Behavioral Health System Baltimore. So I'm going to answer the question around the $10 million from the settlement, which is used for 988 public education. It is $10 million over the course of five years, so $2 million each year will be used to promote 988 in the community across Baltimore City. So what that means is, the funding will be used for a couple of specific things. One program that I really want to lift up, that is unique to Baltimore and has put Baltimore on the map nationally, is the 988 Ambassadors Program, which is a program where we work directly, and we have some ambassadors in the audience, I might add. We work directly with community members to promote 988 at a grassroots level. It has proven that if you work with trusted leaders in the community, that we can do a better job of raising awareness. And we've heard that a lot today, right? We've heard from several people in testimony that people still don't know that 988 is out there. One-third of adults still don't know that it exists. So we have a lot of work to do collectively to raise awareness around 988. And so that's what some of the $10 million will be used. It'll also be used to promote 988 through paid marketing throughout the community across those years. And then the final thing that we're going to do is, we want to show if we're actually raising awareness in Baltimore City. So we're going to be doing some opinion polling to track if our community's awareness and understanding of when to use 988 grows over the course of five years.
Mr. Council President, can I just add one other point to this?
Yes, sir.
So, one of the things that I think we have to keep in mind when we're having this discussion is, I think a lot of times, we talk about behavioral health, and we talk about crisis response, we talk about over response, and we sort of conflate them all together, and they're not, they're all three separate things, and there's obviously a huge overlap between them. So when we talk about 988, 988 does not exclusively serve people in crisis response. There are going to be people that are having behavioral health issues that wouldn't necessarily need a mobile crisis response team. So I feel like the framing here is just, it's important to clarify that, you know, you could be building out your 988 response, your 988 capacity, that would be serving a population beyond just individuals in crisis. And obviously, some of those people, you would hope to be preventing crises as well. So- well. So I just want to sort of defend and clarify that, that context around the 988 promotional materials.
No, I appreciate that clarification, Deputy Solicitor. What I will say though is, I do think it is an expectation of the council and of the public that we have capacity to effectively respond regardless of what that issue is. As you said, there is often comorbid occurrences between trauma, addiction, mental health, crises. And so whatever the need is, we need to be able to meet it. And we need to have the capacity within, whether it's BCRI, the new Behavioral Health Office within the Health Department, wherever it is going to be located, we have to be able to effectively deploy the appropriate response. I'm going to turn to Councilmember Blanchard.
Thank you, Mr. President. Councilman Torrance's question about the scope of the, like, what we actually need to do to get the response that we, the level of response that we need as a city, was effectively my question. So I'll just emphasize also my enthusiasm for hearing the answer there. I'll also say, in the, we talked about the consent decree earlier on, and page 35, section point 98, BPD will revise its policy to establish a preference for the least police-involved response possible, consistent with public safety. And so I think, while I do think it is incredibly important for our officers to have the CIT training and to be expanding the scale of that, both in the academy and in the, at the academy and for the officers who are already in the force, like, it's, I think we're on the same page here, that most of, most of these situations are not something that we want officers as part of the response to. And that, that is my understanding of what is agreed on in the consent decree. I will also just kind of briefly, maybe point out, maybe question, that this, this whole point about the average response time between 90 minutes and 130 minutes for a crisis team response, the, that is a, we talk about the manpower requirements and the shortages within the Police Department and all that sort of thing. This seems like that would be really important for addressing that as well. That if we were able to expand out so that we have trained behavioral health clinicians and whatnot doing that type, doing the work that they need to be doing when it comes to mental health and behavioral health crises, that it allows the police officers to do police work as well. And I think that, that is kind of good for all of us all around. So I don't think there's a question there. Mr. President?
No, point well taken. Less time on mental health response means more time addressing violent crime. Councilman Dorsey?
Thank you, Mr. President. We heard about Medicaid being able to fund mobile crisis response, mobile crisis teams. We heard about, I think, some ARPA dollars available to help fund mobile crisis teams. I'm sure there are other sources of funds. And we heard that there is a requirement attached to any federal dollars and other, I think, state regulations that say that the response has to occur within 60 minutes. Is that, did I get that correct?
Yes, for urban areas, 60 minutes is an average response time for mobile crisis response.
You said urban areas is an average response time or mandatory maximum response time? What?
Thank you for that clarity. 60 minutes or less, is the words I should have used. 60 minutes or less for an urban area for a mobile crisis response team, which is a specialty intensive behavioral health service that provides a crisis assessment, a clinical crisis assessment on scene in the community.
Is an average or is a regulated maximum response time?
Average, average. Just make sure I'm answering that correctly. Yes, average.
Okay, then let me make sure I further have some clarity on this. Is an average response time or is a mandate that our average must not be more than? Does that make sense? It's the difference between we actually respond on average in 60 minutes or we are mandated to on average respond in 60 minutes, I guess?
I'm going to do my best to answer this. The regulations state response time or six, of 60 minutes or less in an urban area. What we do when we look at our data is we look at our percentiles. 50% of our runs are within X amount of time, 75% of our runs are within X amount of time. We took that methodology from how FIRE measures their response time. So we're looking at all response times.
Okay. In our research in preparing for this hearing, one thing that we have in our notes is that BHSB presented to the city's Police Accountability Board on August 4th of this year that the monthly average response time in the first half of 2025 was between 92 and 136 minutes for mobile crisis response.
I will have to go back and look at those slides. I am the one that did that presentation. I think the slide is what the council president showed in the beginning. I'd have to go back and look at that and get clarity on what you're saying.
Assuming that that information is correct, because it came from a BHSB presentation this month, assuming that it's accurate, that's not within the timeframe that it's supposed to be. 96 or 136 minutes is not 60 minutes?
Oh, correct. It's not, it's not, it's not where it should be.
Okay. A new state law adds a 25 cent fee to cell phone bills to fund the 988 system. And so BHSB is poised to receive approximately $6.5 million for Central Maryland's 988 hotline as a result of that new law. Is that accurate?
I would have to confirm the number. I don't know that off the top of my head. But there is a 988 telecom fee that goes to the state. The state then awards that to local behavioral health authorities. I don't know that exact number off the top of my head for what we have at BHSB.
All right. I'm going to just assume that the research is accurate enough, that it probably came from a DLS report on the bill and some of the calculations. Is it the case that that money is only being used for 988 call centers or is only intended to be used for call centers? Or is some portion of that money going to be used for mobile crisis teams?
It is used for call centers, text and chat right now. And we're working with this state to see how else it could be used. But we don't have any confirmed funding from that source for mobile crisis response.
My understanding is that the law does allow for it to be used for mobile crisis response.
That is my understanding as well.
And who ultimately decides then how that funding gets used?
The Maryland Department of Health.
The BHSB does not determine how that funding can be used by BHSB once it's?
We are not, we are not the final decision maker. We can suggest uses to the Maryland Department of Health. It is their funding. They would be the ones that would approve how that funding gets used, which is, we are in conversations with them about how to use it broader than 988.
What is your expected timeline for being able to reach some sort of determination or receive some determination? Are you asking specifically to be able to use that funding for mobile crisis?
Yes, we have had those conversations. I don't have a timeline. I'm dependent on the Maryland Department of Health and their responsiveness.
Is it BHSB's position that some portion of this money should go to mobile crisis teams?
Yes, because Medicaid will not cover the full cost of what is needed for mobile crisis response.
Do you believe that there is enough money that you could use from that pot to make up the gap so that you can get the response times from 96 to 136 minutes down to 60 minutes or less?
I suspect not.
Do you know?
I don't know that for sure.
Do you know what that figure would be?
We'd have to go back and do some planning, which we can do.
If this has not already been requested or is not already intended to be presented to the committee, I'd like to know what that gap looks like in terms of need, specifically in dollars, to make up the time gap to allow BHSB to respond in the time that the regulations say that they're supposed to respond. I don't think, I need to belabor the point. But before I let this go, I'll just say, I have personally been in the shoes of a person in crisis. I have personally been a person in crisis who didn't know, one, that 988 existed, if it even did, in 2002, 2003. And I have sat on the steps of a Calvert Street row home, waiting for emergency response for two, two and a half hours, I think, only to be voluntarily hauled to a hospital in the back of a paddy wagon by PPD, so that I could be dumped in the waiting room of Maryland General Hospital in a state of crisis, and be left there, not even to be triaged for four and a half hours, sleeping in an uncomfortable chair for five or 10 minutes at a time, until I finally, you know, came out of what I was going through enough that I could call a loved one and ask them to come and get me, take me to get something to eat. I know firsthand, deeply and personally, what it means to sit and wait in a state of crisis and am, one, dumbfounded by the fact that I actually waited it out personally. Two, not surprised that others don't. And three, just deeply, deeply unnerved by the fact that we don't get to people in the duration of time that people need. Because I know a lot of other friends that haven't made that call, or plenty of others who have called out in other ways. And that 60 minutes, 90 minutes, 120 minutes, 150 minutes, is a matter of life and death, not just because of how somebody else might respond adversely in that duration, but because my life may make a turn of my crisis decision-making in that moment. I'm just really lucky. I can't explain my fortune anyway, other than I'm really effing lucky that my own crisis state didn't take me somewhere in that two and a half hours that I was waiting. Like, it sounds like we're leaving a lot of people waiting. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Dorsey. Councilmember Porter?
Thank you so much, Mr. President. May I have a moment of privilege here just for like two minutes? I am deeply concerned that there are so many agencies that need to be at the table that are not at the table. And I want to thank Councilwoman Dorsey for your courage. I'm actually, I have experience on the other side. So being the person that answers those calls, being the person that navigates, not only through care, but also the after effect, you know, what that hour looks like. They call it the golden hour. They call it the golden hour, where you are, you're essentially being that stopgap for a person that essentially can go into further crisis. And it can definitely be a life or death situation. And I, I'm deeply frustrated because while this hearing was gratefully to be called, we've missed the mark. We have not talked about any type of protocol or procedure that, you know, need, needs to be talked about. We have not gone through any type of workflows from any inter-agency coordination between each of the agencies. And, and Mr. President, I understand that 12 minutes was provided to the agency. We need more. We need to intricately go through the workflows and the protocols and see who is the responsible agency. Because oftentimes, throughout this entire hearing, I'm hearing, this person was this person, this person was this person. Like, we, that, we've got to start getting more detailed in how we are, how we are implementing and conducting these hearings. So my first committee request is, this is for the deputy mayor. I want a workflow procedure of how, when, when, when a person goes into crisis from 911, how are they handled? Who is the responsible agency? And explicitly go through each step. Because we're clearly missing the mark here. If we are going out to a, a house 20 or more times, how is that not being flagged for DHCD? How is that not being flagged for our hospital partners? How is that not being flagged for agencies that continuously are paid to see these people? We have wellness checks at the state level. Like, it's just incredibly frustrating to me. And Mr. President, I thank you for your leadership for this. I really do. And, but, but I'm to a point where I'm just tired of talking. Like, we need to have some more action behind this. And so I cannot express that enough, that we got to get our workflows in place because the protocols need to be there. And, and I'm not saying that the protocols are not there. The protocols need to be shared with the council and they need to be shared within the agency wherein which they reside and they're supposed to reside. So we've got to get very detail-oriented because we're clearly missing people. We're clearly missing people and we're clearly missing the target by who is the responsible agency when that person goes into crisis.
Thank you, Councilmember Porter. I'm going to just reiterate that as a committee request. And again, just to echo, something that's been said throughout this hearing is that it feels jumbled and it feels like there are many different partners in the room. And it is not clear who is in charge of all of this. Councilmember Porter talked about workflow as a follow-up request. And again, I want to just reiterate, someone needs to be in charge at the top of this system. There needs to be a responsible party that is holding it together. It cannot be this agency, that nonprofit, this agency. We have to have some inter-agency and inter-organizational coordination. And again, I think that is something that has been made really clear throughout this hearing, is that somebody needs to own it.
Yeah. Thank you for that, Council President. Thank you, Councilwoman Porter. We will happily provide workflows. We did have very brief workflows in slides, BPD, as well as EMS. However, we did not have time to go into detail, but we will be happy to provide detailed reports of that.
Sure. Thank you so much, Dr. DeRosa. And I want to ask some questions. Since there are workflows, what specific? what specific indicators indicate a 911 narrative trigger BPD's behavioral crisis response? Specifically, who makes the call? The call taker, dispatcher, and/or is the on-scene supervisor? And what documentation is required and/or integrated required at each step?
I can speak to BPD. So the dispatchers have the ability to search for CIT trained officers that are in the field. There is a specialty skill within the CAD system that allows them to search for officers who are working at that time, who have CIT training. Also, it is BPD policy that CIT officers go to these calls for service. And if they go to a call that may not be behavioral health in nature on the onset, but when they go to the call and they investigate it and they determine that it is, it's at that point they can also request a CIT officer to respond to the scene. So there's myriad of ways to get a CIT officer to an incident.
So I want to follow up to that question. The Fire Department earlier in the conversation mentioned that it was 320 occurrences. What was that 320 number data point that you just mentioned?
That was with regard to, we do every other month report on our super users or frequent callers. And with that particular piece, it was 321 calls for eight people.
321, 321 calls for eight people. So that was 321 occurrences that were happening. How many CIT officers went out to those 320 calls?
I wouldn't have that information now. And what we know, a lot of times, the Fire Department will independently respond to people on their own. And then there's cross times where we respond to calls. So they may encounter an individual numerous times. And then separately, we may encounter them on our own numerous times. Likewise, we may be at the same event simultaneously.
So are there any type of interconnectedness between those 320 calls? So for example, if BPD is coming at the same time as the Fire Department, are there any type of coordination, any type of kind of reconciliation between those two agencies?
Not in the way you're asking the question, yeah.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilmember Porter. Councilmember Gray?
Thank you. And I just want to start by offering my condolences to the families and those that were lost. And make it a point to realize that there may have been, there may have been reasons, there may have been some steps in between that made sure these people are here today, which is why we are here today. So my first question is for the mayor's office. Is 988 DCRI, which is Baltimore Crisis Response, and MCT a part of city stat meetings? And if yes, can you explain the oversight and what is reviewed? And if no, can you all consider incorporating regular oversight into city stat meetings?
Great. Thank you for that question. As of now, they are not a part of city stat. They are monitored by BHSB as the local behavioral health authority. But I will turn it over to BHSB to discuss their oversight of BCRI.
Thank you, Dr. DeRosa. Yes, we do provide the funding for 988. And we do meet regularly with the multiple vendors. And the data is also shared through the Behavioral Health Collaborative, which is led by the city, BPD, and BHSB. And there is a data committee as well from the Behavioral Health Collaborative that looks regularly at the 988 data and how the response is going. So it is a double thing. Us as the local behavioral health authority, working with the providers to dig down deep and figure out what is contributing to the response time. And then also partnering with fire and police through the Behavioral Health Collaborative to look at the partnership amongst all three entities.
Thank you for that answer. But I would like to see that type of information being put in the city stat. It is very important that if we're talking with BCRI and they're telling us the hotspots, the trends, what they're seeing. If we're not putting that in the real time, those are numbers on the paper that means nothing. They're not saving the lives that need to be saved. So if we could make sure that we're getting the useful information and we're implementing that into the system that we have right now in city stat, that by all accounts, it does a great job. Can we implement that to make sure that we are helping those that are vulnerable? To piggyback on what Councilwoman Porter said, it's very important that if we have a repeat address, that DHCD is going to make sure that, as we know, a lot of these houses that folks are continuously raising concerns about, drug treatment houses, a lot of these are not licensed. And we hear cries from communities each and every day about this. And when we turn around and we have 15 calls in the span of two months and not any, we don't have any type of interconnectivity with the agencies speaking with each other. Say, hey, DHCD, go out and do this. Do your job. This is what we're seeing. We're failing our communities and we're failing those who need help the most. And so this leads to my second question. And this is kind of revolving around public reporting. Will BPD, the Fire Department, BCRI, 988, and United Way commit to a quarterly public dashboard? And with that dashboard, the type of information that I would like to see on there is diversions, co-notifications, EPs, reports written, 988 transfers, MCT availability, handoff lag percentiles, and repeat call metrics. And have them by district. Because I think it's very important that if we're going to address this, we have to break it down in numbers to, once again, see where these hotspots are. And I think BCRI is going to play an amazing part in this. But we have to make sure that we are, that we are being intentional about getting these numbers and not just bringing them up to us so we can see. But actually putting those numbers and putting them in the street and put them in use. And so I'll go back to my question. Can we commit to a quarterly public dashboard with those metrics? If need be, I can make sure that I send that over to you guys.
Thank you. Yes, I was going to ask you to repeat that. We do have our 911 diversion dashboard, but I think you listed a myriad of additional data points that we'd have to look at.
Yeah. And so I'll make sure that my office also just send it over to you. But it's diversions, co-notifications, EPs, which, the emergency petitions, written reports, 988 transfers, MCT availability, handoff lag percentiles, and repeat caller metrics. And then have those by district as well. And not to take up any more time, because I want to make sure that the public gets their say. I also have a committee request. There we are. Also have committee requests for any and all calls from 2022, 2023, 2024 and year-to-date that involves any and all mental and behavioral health crisis or related matters, not limited to psych alerts, behavioral crisis events, suicide attempts, the whole myriad. And I don't want to read it off, but we'll send it over to you guys. And it'll be available for the public as well. And Kimmy will hand them off to the available, to the appropriate agencies. But I have a data committee request and I'll hand that over to you. And thank you for your time.
Thank you for that request. And like I said, we will share what we do currently have. Given all the agencies mentioned, certainly want to get with fire to talk about data sharing and all of those things. But appreciate that request.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Council Vice President Middleton.
Thank you, Mr. President. And my condolences as well for the families that were affected and which is basically sparring this whole dialogue. I also, Council President, want to thank you for mentioning Ally Smith, which really kind of started the ball rolling with this whole idea. And also letting the public know that we are really the first city, really, in the state, and I'd go on and say, in the country, that is taking on a big task. And we're really being watched by everyone nationally. A reminder that the Maryland Association of Counties, a state organization, awarded the city for that wonderful start. And also nationally, the National Association of Counties also recognized what we're really trying to do here. All that to say, I do have a question for the Baltimore Crisis Response. So listening to all the dialogue that, and questions that the council has raised, it sounds like to me you're asking us to fight to fund an entirely different model. And my question is, what are you all doing with the teams that you already have? You haven't really, my colleague, Councilwoman Porter, you know, did mention that there needs to be a strong partnership. Here's another piece that the city really needs to work hard in talking and working with every agency. That's the only way this is going to work. Every agency has a piece of this and you have to work together. I, this is like a completely different subject, but the Council President and I just left earlier a very well-needed library. And you know how our libraries are operated different now. And as a visionary myself, I'm trying to look at, hey, you know, Park Heights is another area that has needs and has lots of critical problem situations. And it took 18 years to get, for me to try to help to make sure that the agencies are talking to each other, which is unreal. It was hurting that neighborhood, which was hurting the entire city. So it's just another example of you got to really start talking to each other. I want the Crisis Response Center to respond to this. Because as I'm listening to this, you're, things are still all over the place. And we want to make sure we support a model that, I guess, was started and it's not something different. Because it's really, you know, I think it's confusing us even more. We're talking about a lot of money here and we want to make sure we get it right. Please respond.
Mr. Davis, I believe that was directed to you.
Yeah. So Councilwoman and Vice President, I know you asked me that question. I am a service provider, so I am not BHSB. BHSB and BCRI are two separate organizations. BHSB is the system manager. And it was Krista Taylor who suggested that there needs to be a different model. So I would defer to her to answer that question.
Thank you, Jonathan. Yeah, I'll do my best to answer that. There's been a lot of growth over the last, just the last couple of years. And we first needed to get to 24/7 mobile crisis response, get to sustaining funding for that. And now's the time to bring in enhanced models to what we already have. And that is what the Behavioral Health Collaborative has been focusing on, is first getting 988 up and running, getting mobile crisis up and running, getting that 24/7. And is now talking about, how do we get these other things that we know are needed, like the other models that we've been talking about?
So we are connected to the community. And I want to know what your office is doing to help the community be aware of this. What are you doing? That should be the number one word on every piece of paper that you have. How do we help the barriers in the community and to get to them? Just give, tell us in layman's terms, what are you doing community-wise? What are your teams doing?
Our teams, our teams at BHSB, we are promoting 988 wherever, however we can. We're doing that in collaboration with the Health Department, with the mayor's office, with the police department. We have our community ambassadors program that Ms. Brienstein mentioned. We're engaging with the community regularly to help promote the word about calling 988. Like the deputy city solicitor mentioned, you know, that 988 is broader than mobile crisis. It is about the one easy-to-remember number to call for emotional help and support. So we are out in the community regularly talking about 988.
So you're saying you're regularly out talking. How? With who? How are things set up? Are you calling community leaders and going to community meetings and talking? What is the plan that you have set up to do, for the outreach that you need money for?
Yeah, to elaborate more in detail, I really do want to call up Adrian Brienstein. She oversees that work for BHSB.
Just give us a little more detail instead of just vague topics.
Yeah, yeah.
This is now time for some detail.
So one thing I'll just quickly clarify, because I was getting a little confused jumping from questions, is BHSB does not operate the mobile crisis teams. We have community education, community engagement teams that operate very similarly to kind of like outreach. So we are not doing the direct service. I want to just clarify that because I didn't know if it was getting lost or not. We have a team of community, a community engagement team of people that go out and they are in community. They are in libraries, they are in our hospitals, they are working with our faith leaders, building out different networks to connect with people so that we can be continuing to do that public education on 988. We know we can't do it alone, which is why we work to build our relationships with community members. So it's, we have not only the 988 ambassadors program, which again is working with community leaders who find very creative ways to promote 988. We've got people who are out doing that in their churches and congregations, at PTA meetings. We will go anywhere. I just made several connections through this hearing and we will be going to them and talking about 988. So that is what our team is doing. I mean, we're even at the markets. We will go literally anywhere that we are asked or anywhere that we can proactively get out into the community. Because that is how we are going to work to spread the word. And so we build our network by not only with connecting with community members, but we give them 988 materials, we give them a training so that they know how to talk about 988, so that we're talking about it consistently and people know when they can call it. One of the things we have learned from our community members, because we not only just teach them, but we listen to them and take their feedback, is that 988 is not top of mind for substance use, for example. We've learned from them that, and you know, for everyone in the audience, so you can call 988 if you want to get access to substance use services. But we learned from the community that it's not top of mind. So we're working with community and having that back and forth and taking their feedback to try to continue to grow our collective knowledge about 988 and when people can call.
Thank you. Dr. DeRosa, it seemed like you wanted something else to say?
No, I mean, I think I would offer that BHSB has shown up when we invite them on community walks. They are present as partners, so I did just want to add that.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Madam VP. Councilmember Parker?
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, everybody, for being here this evening. So when I speak with constituents, they know what to expect when they call 911 for a police-related matter. They know what to expect when they're calling 911 for a Fire Department response. They know what to expect when they call 311 and get connected to city services. But lots of folks, and again, we've been talking about outreach and education, which is part of it. But lots of folks are still really unsure what 98, what will happen. One, when they should call 988. And two, what will happen? And we've been talking about what will happen and about how some of what will happen isn't quite what needs to happen, which is part of the problem, which then leads back to people not being sure that it actually is the right resource to call because what they imagine it ought to be, or what we think it ought to be, it is not yet. And therefore, they're not sure it's a resource they can count on, even if they know exactly what it's for, right? So I mean, if they knew what the response times were, that might give them pause, be like, ah, I don't know if the person I'm calling about can wait that long. Therefore, maybe that's not the right resource for me because I can't count on it arriving in a timely fashion to intervene in this crisis, right? And so I think as we're talking about the $2 million a year for five years around 988 awareness, I think not only what kinds of things, and I'm not saying anything you don't know, but what kinds of things would lead to a call like this, but also what people what people can expect from the city and its partners when we make that call. Yeah, because it's undeniable that this resource is needed. I mean, people have been begging for this. I mean, I've been in the state my whole life. I work in human services as a clergy person, lots of us work in other ways, and just being a deeply connected neighbor who notices and cares about things in your community, the need for these kinds of interventions is clear every time you walk outside your door and walk through your community. And so, it's really encouraging that the Behavioral Health Collaborative and this work is taking place in a particular way in Baltimore, because the need is so acute here and is obvious for us. But not only people are unsure about what they're going to get when they call 988, but they're also worried and scared that in calling either 911 or 988, not only might the resources arrive late, but also that there's, that's a real risk. And we're talking here today in part because people called about folks in crisis and people wound up, people wound up dead at the hand of a public servant, right, or the result of an encounter with public servants. And so, if that's on people's minds about like, whether I should even call or not, because there's a risk to calling, not just the risk of it, it might take a while for somebody to get here, but the wrong resources might be deployed, or people without the right training, or people not following the protocols, or this could escalate in a way that could result in harm to my loved one, to my neighbor, that makes it really hard for us to have people trust that this whole response, whether it's a 911 response or a 911 call or 988 call, is going to result in the help that is desperately needed by the individual, by their friend or loved one, or by their neighbor. Part of what got lifted up is this first and second person aspect of things of calling. And it first came up in the 911 diversion, and we'll come to that in a second. But for 988 calls, for calls that are going to 988, is that same first, second, third person protocol part of the screening process? So, I understand if you call about, if I'm calling about myself, I understand that that's perfectly reasonable and how that might be handled. If I'm calling about my friends, my neighbor, my housemate who I'm sitting next to, okay, I understand. Is 988 appropriate for me to call about the person on my corner who's in the middle of a mental health crisis that I'm not going to spend an hour and a half sitting next to, that I don't feel safe, I don't have the kind of relation, for whatever reason, like I'm not going to sit next to them at the bus stop for an hour and a half on the phone with the clinician trying to facilitate that conversation? Is 988 an appropriate way to take care of my neighbor who is, you know, at a physical or social distance from me or not? Because we heard that the 911 diversion, it doesn't work for the reasons described. But can 988 handle that?
A great question, Councilman. We want everybody to call 988, whether you consider yourself a first, second, third party. The issue with the third party is the level and type of information we can receive to ensure that the environment is safe and that there's no violence out. So, we do encourage a third party to call, and we will ask a series of questions using that triage matrix. And if we can gain the appropriate type and level of information to send out a mobile response team, we'll do that. If we cannot, then we will do a warm handoff to what we believe is a more appropriate response for that person. And we'll communicate that very clearly with the person as well.
I really appreciate that. And so, that's, as I understand it, 2% of calls to 988 result in that warm handoff to a 911, whether a first responder's, a fire department, or police. Is that number accurate?
That sounds about right. It is very, very low, the amount of time we have to call 911 back.
Right. Only because I know there's people who are going to be deliberately choosing 988 precisely because they are worried about what a police response might be, this is a loved one or a neighbor they know well, and they might know some history. There may be people who are deliberately trying to steer it towards a mental health professional because of their knowledge of the situation. And so, knowing that that number is so low, I think, is a really helpful piece of information to share with folks. On the 911 diversion side, understanding the reasons why first and second, there, reasons why first and second person can work for diversion, but third person can't. In a third-person situation, where the person calling is describing some sort of mental health, behavioral health crisis, clearly, but it can't be diverted to 988 because it's a third person, and there's no way to have an interaction there with the 988 responder, are those still flagged as within a police or within a fire department, whoever's going to respond, or both? Is it still flagged as a behavioral health matter, and therefore, will the folks, will that also change who's deployed for that?
As Director Reddick is coming up, can I also ask that you provide clarification just for the public on second-person caller and third-person caller in case folks aren't aware?
Thank you, Dr. Girazza.
I can, do you want me to go up to the microphone?
Sure, of course.
Thank you again. So, the third-party calls, I just want to also say that when we talk about classification, the data is limited, and this discussion assumes that we know what's going on. So, when you have somebody that calls, it is really left up to the 911 specialist. So, a third party occurs when you are not either familiar with the patient or the caller, and the person is removed. So, an example of that would be, there's somebody that appears to be in distress. And the challenge of this is, is when somebody's in distress, they could be in distress because they are under the influence of substances. They could be shot, they could be suicidal, and it's very difficult to know. And a lot of these calls, Director Reddick has, you know, 90 seconds to make this determination. So, to the first point, the 911 direct, we've done a couple of audits of these calls, the 911 direct to 988 for a third party is not effective because we're not able to link. And I want to say that if you had, for example, a future state, if that's what we're moving to, where you had another immediate alternative response, it is possible to investigate. If there is suggestion of violence, that is usually something that goes to the police. If it is a suggestion that somebody has an altered mental status, because in my world as an emergency, an EMS physician, if somebody is not acting right, I think it is also quite a bit of bias to assume that it's because of reflexively a mental health issue. It could be somebody is sick, so we need to make that assessment. So, depending upon what that caller will say to the 911 specialist, it says altered level of consciousness or psychiatric disturbance, then typically EMS will come. We have worked very diligently, and as I'm sure Director Reddick can attest, we have worked diligently to avoid reflexive police response. What encourages a police response, a co-response, is when there is a suggestion of violence or the presence of a weapon. So, typically, the altered level of consciousness and behavioral emergencies as such will go to 911, meaning EMS. I also want to say that, remember the initial classification, you talked about data, it's also disconnected. So, if a caller says, I think they're having a mental health crisis, and they actually have an infection due to a urine infection, we won't know that, but it will be classified as a psychiatric emergency. So, I hope that clarifies third person for 911. What that means for us is, somebody is not connected to the scene, and nobody has direct familiarity with the event. Anything you'd like to add, Director Reddick?
As Dr. Lorna said, especially when we do receive those type of calls for somebody who is a third-party caller, we can put the information in the CAD system where we can flag their call, as he said, where we can let you know, hey, it's a possible, or this person has, you know, is experiencing, or they recognize these things in the individual. So, when police do go out, or medic, based off of what the person says, and that's why I said during my presentation, that the triage, the triage stage is very critical. The information that you give that 911 specialist at that time is very critical, because that's what actually allows us to say or answer the question, where you answer the questions is what actually can do the diversion. So, if I say, hey, do you see if they have any weapons, and you tell us no, then I'm going to put it as the person doesn't have any weapons. Do that person appear to be violent, and you tell me no, I'm going to, the 911 specialist is going to put it as that person is not violent. But then, when they go out there, that person might have a knife, that person might be violent. So, that's why we say the triage stage of the 911 call-taking is very, very critical, that you give us the information, and we really want the people that either the first-party or second-party people on the scene, because we can get that type of information that's needed. But in the CAD system, we can, when we're doing the call, we can put in there that the person do appear to have a mental crisis or behavioral crisis at that moment, or appears to be intoxicated or substance abuse. We do have that availability to do that.
So, I recognize that the information, that whatever's shared from the caller will make its way into the report and into the response. But, so let's say, let's say that the indicators, the triage stage, indicate a BPD response, but part of what has been shared is the possibility of the appearance of a mental health crisis, a behavioral crisis, and I appreciate your point, doctor. Will that mean that the BPD response will include officers who have training to, in behavioral health alongside other responding officers? I mean, will that information trigger a different, sending different officers or a different protocol as they arrive on the scene?
I'll let BPD answer that, because I deal with the call-takers in itself, so I'll let him answer that.
Understood. I appreciate it.
And I'm just going to make it very clear for anybody, and I think everybody knows this, I always open my house 24/7, 911. At any given time that you actually want to come in, listen to the 911 calls, you can, because it gives you a different perspective of what the call-takers go through, but then it also allows you to see what type of community that you provide the service to. So, I always, like I said, I open my doors to anyone that wants to come in and sit side by side with that 911 specialist, along with the fire communication dispatchers, to have that one-on-one conversation with them, but then also see how the calls come in and how they are dispatched.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. I think it's important to reiterate that all BPD officers are trained in behavioral health. They receive annual training in behavioral, so our officers are trained in that area. If, as long as the call is classified as a behavioral health call, dispatchers do have the ability to search the CAD system for those officers that are on duty at that time who have CIT's training, so that they can dispatch that call to a CIT-trained officer. Likewise, if they arrive to a scene and they determine that it's behavioral health in nature, they can also request a CIT officer to respond to that.
And I think the final question I have there, if, and this is, this could be for the fire department too, but BPD is up here at the moment. If in the course of responding to, maybe behavioral wasn't flagged in the 911 call, but if in the course of responding to an incident, either fire department or police department, come to an understanding that a response from a mobile crisis team would be helpful to address deeper issues beyond what they're able to address in that moment, is that built into the protocol? Is there a direct, is there a kind of a direct line where BPD or responding fire personnel can reach BCI's teams and request that support? What is, yeah?
Yeah, so we train officers to, and the emphasis is on the least police-involved response. So, we want to connect them to a resource that doesn't involve law enforcement where we can. So, if an officer is on scene and they're able to, you know, the person's not in crisis, it's de-escalated, and there's a way to connect them to alternative resources, we have the officers call directly to 988. As Ms. Taylor mentioned earlier, there is a direct number that law enforcement and fire department, public safety personnel have access to that allows you to connect immediately to 988, so we can connect them over the phone where needed.
Thank you, Major.
Yeah.
Thank you all very much. Thank you, Mr. President.
Now, thank you, Councilman Parker, and Councilman Jones.
Thank you, Mr. President. First, I just want to highlight a concern of mine, and then, you know, move on to my questions. First being, when it comes to the 988 in diversion process, I know it says that when it comes to diversion, if it's the right type of call, it can be diverted to a 988. I feel like, well, one, that we put too much emphasis and importance on who that 911 caller is in our system, because their personal cause 911 isn't trained, and we don't know what state they're in. So, they'll put so much emphasis on the information that we get from them to determine whether or not it's getting diverted or not, is maybe a flaw in the system. We're putting a lot of, a lot of faith on who's calling 911. So, instead of, and when we're talking about if it's the right type of call, it gives a sense of a track A or track B. If it's not the right type of call, then it stays track A, 911. And if it is the right type, then we can divert it and do track B in some sense. Is there a way to more, do a hybrid? Like, you know, so if it's, so rather than having it be the perfect situation where it hits all the points, then we move it to divert it to a 988, or if it's a possibility for 988 to even be involved, then we involve them as well. You know, rather than, it's either going to be a 988, and we send the mobile crisis team out, it's like, no, if there's a possibility where it would be necessary, we send 911 along with some 988, you know, with the mobile crisis team as well. I think that dual sense will be helpful, rather than answering the phone and having to pick and choose which one we're going to do. Because, you know, as I said in the presentation, sometimes both 911 and 988 stays involved, and the 988 clinician is looped in. And I think if we can more often try to get 988 involved, rather than not, it may be helpful in diverting some of these things, rather than feeling like we have to choose and pick one or the other.
Yeah, and thanks for that, Councilman. And what I would ask is that somebody on our team speak to, what you just described is the co-response, which we do. So, amongst the team, can somebody address the Councilman's point?
So, the BPD does have a co-responder model. We have a police officer paired with a clinician. The clinician is a BCI clinician, and they are able to respond to behavioral health calls. They can proactively respond to calls if they're in that area, or officers can request the co-responder team to come to the scene, especially on a more difficult situation that may exceed, where they need additional support. So, we do have that resource available to the officers as well.
I just wanted, I apologize, Councilmember, I just briefly want to follow up on that. My understanding is you only have one co-responder team. Is that accurate?
Yes, we have one co-responder team that operates seven days a week.
So, just to be clear, that is a very small amount of co-responder compared to other metropolitan areas that use this model?
Well, oh, sorry, Mr. President. I was going to say, in Baltimore County, they actually, on any given shift with their mobile crisis teams, they only have two for the entire county. So, we're not, we're not completely off-kilter there in terms of us having one team.
I would just say, my understanding from Albuquerque, from Denver, from Durham, from a lot of these places, is that one team is very, very short for a city the size of Baltimore. I apologize for jumping in on your questioning line, Councilman Jones. Back to you.
Nope, you kind of answered my call. I was going to ask, how many calls do they answer? How large is this team? How, what is the frequency in their involvement in some of these calls throughout the city?
So, we have data. I don't have it in front of me on the number of calls that they handle. Happy to provide that. But they operate eight hours a day from 11:00. The hours of operation are from 11:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. Those hours are aligned with kind of the call volume when behavioral health call come into the police department. So, we have them working as the calls kind of peak throughout the day and then start to decline into the evening hours. But that resource is available seven days a week from those hours.
I would just say that I think that is the ideal way of handling some of these things, is a dual-track, because in some sense, they say, we're already doing it when there's 988 calls and there's violence or something involved. And if we can, because, but doing it, having one team only for eight hours a day for the entire city, it just isn't enough. I'll just encourage, I'll just leave it there for that part. And for my second question was, when it comes to the mobile response time, I was looking at it, like the national average, that the national and state average is 60 minutes or less, and according to the chart in the presentation by the Behavioral Crisis Response System, it's almost double that. It's over 120 minutes in the month of June. I guess when the national average is 55 minutes, I think, when we talk about crisis, like, that means now. You know, for the national average to be, and the national state standard to be 60 minutes or less, and our response time is twice that, I just think that's, in some sense, unacceptable, and that's only the 75 percentile if I'm reading it correct. And when the whole definition of a crisis- And when the whole definition of a crisis response team is, the moment is now, like, not later. So it's kinda oxymoron, or like, it's not even useful if our, our average, not even average time, well, 75 percentile time is double the national standard in the middle of a crisis. I mean, it might not feel like a crisis, something like your house burning down. And if it takes twice as long for the fire department to get here to the national average, then we're really gonna be in trouble. So for people who are going through mental health crisis, it's equivalent to your house burning down. And if someone's asking you to wait twice as long as the national average, then we just have work to do. And with that said, and with that said, I just wanna focus on the training of the officers, which is why it's important that until we have a system that's built where we're able to respond in the adequate time to address a crisis, it's really important that we give all our officers not just the basic training, but the extra training that they need in order to handle some of these behavioral crises that exist. And I understand the challenges that presents itself with the dissent decree and how we need to get permission to kinda move that. That was stated earlier. So I guess my question would be, what does that process look like in order to get it added? What does the timeline look like in order to get that included? Any idea? Just part of the expectation?
About the consent decree and the process of changing it?
Yes, of changing it so we can make the additional training a mandate rather than something that's voluntary.
So we send the information, the items that we wanna change, to the Department of Justice, Office of Civil Rights. They look at it, they'll discuss, and then if they agree, then that's where the lawyers come in. They file a motion to change, and then ultimately the judge needs to approve it or not, but I don't. They have those changes with them. Department of Justice is looking at it now.
All right, you said they already have the changes or? Okay, great. You know how long it may be until we see an end to that?
Speak for the Department of Justice. I don't, I'm not sure, but they have, they do have that. Yes.
Now, I'll wrap up too. Well, until then, I would just encourage for us as a city to give every incentive possible for folks to take the voluntary, to take this additional training. I mean, and maybe if a take-home card isn't doing it, we can talk about overtime, we can talk about triple time. People love money, people will do it. But I think it's important that we get our folks trained in every way possible because we in the city have, always have no problem paying officers overtime, it seems like. So why not do it in order to ensure that they have the adequate training?
And I'll add that, that we are off more CIT training this year. Previously, we'd have done it before. This year, we're, this year, we're doing it six times.
Okay, so yeah, cuz I would, I would support that, hands down.
Yeah, thank you, Councilman. And again, just to reiterate the commitment from Commissioner Worley to, in the academy class, begin mandating training, the 40-hour training for all cadets and academy folks. Thank you, colleagues. Thank you to the agency folks. I do want to begin public testimony. After public testimony, I'm going to attempt to encapsulate some of what we heard this evening and provide some next steps. I am going to begin tonight with Ms. Bridgette Dobbins. Ms. Dobbins, please come on up. Each member of the public will have three minutes, and we sincerely appreciate you coming and testifying tonight. The floor is yours.
Thank you, Councilman President and members and committee. On behalf of Patricia Brooks, on behalf of Patricia Brooks, I'm a family member. My question that I have, when the 911 call is sent, and the mental is a problem, and as a dispatcher stated, and the calls come in, when there is not available crisis team, who then makes the decision to enter a resident's home when they didn't want you to enter? But the rule is, you're helping them to save themselves from danger. But then incident occurs when they lose their life because of their mental illness. We need to fix that problem. Cuz what I see for the public as well as family members, people are gonna be fearful to call 911 because their loved one could lose their life. That's why some people are silent for their fear that if we call for help or the person calls for help, what's gonna happen? And I'm a female myself. If I was at home and someone kicked my door in, and I'm not of same mind, or if I am of same mind, I wanna know who are those people coming in my home? I too would try to protect myself as a female home alone. I don't know how it feels to have mental illness cuz I, right now, I'm pretty sane. But I'm thinking of others. I don't want another person to have to go through what we're going through right now. And I'm speaking for her son, which is here. Chris, stand, please. This is Ms. Brooks' son. And we need to fix this problem. And it's not just our problem, it's everyone's problem. And we need help to fix it fast so that we do not lose another life because the system is not fixed. And you can't expect family to fix the problem as well. We have work to do too. But then we look to our council people, we look to the fire department, we look to the police department, we look to physicians, mental health. So this is a real problem, and I know we can fix it. But we gotta fix it fast so that it doesn't be another family member. And thank you for your time, and thank you all for your jobs, 911 included. Thank everybody, but we do have to fix it.
Thank you, Ms. Dobbins.
We need it. Thank you for the time.
Thank you, Ms. Dobbins, and I wanna thank you and Christopher as well for joining me and my team in anticipation of this conversation, and thank you just to the entire family that has been such a great support and for really bolstering this work and this hearing. Please know that your voices are very much heard in this chamber. Next, Shorty Davis.
How much time I got?
Yeah, three minutes, Shorty.
If I take six, I'm gonna get put off.
Let's keep it three.
All right, we're gonna play this right here. What it is, is Ivan Bates is not in this room, and he needs to be in this room. Ivan Bates ain't here because this is part of his job, protecting our people. Now, I got this message here from David Camanut from the depart, from Judge Bennett's office. And I'm trying to play it here for my court record, I mean, for my records. And it won't play for some reason. Still tiring me. I ain't gonna run it out. No, it won't play inside, it won't play in here. Long story short, Commissioner Worley, Commissioner Worley, Commissioner Harris, I filed my paperwork with the Baltimore City Dissent Decree, right, as a private citizen. Worley never responded to that, that material, all right? Baltimore City Police came in my house on three occasions in one night, October the 15th. Now, the civilian review board or police accountability board says that the statute of limitations has ran out on my case. But y'all gave me this dog and pony show for like nine, 10 years that made the statute run out. You came in my house and put guns to my head because of my activism. And that ain't acceptable. I'm a cook here in Baltimore. I cater. I work for 85% of the people here. I work for y'all here. And by me telling y'all stories and y'all secrets, ain't against the law. Y'all did Baltimore the Wire, and y'all made this persona about Baltimore being this bad place. And then we still wearing that on our back today. You know what I'm saying? That in itself is a mental health problem. You know what I'm saying? We getting stereotyped. Now, I've been charged with terrorism. I'm not a terrorist, I'm an activist, and activism ain't terrorism. Your city council has known about this. Sharon Middleton been knowing about this. Brian Dorsey been knowing me for how long? You was a little kid when you met me. And y'all still ain't satisfied my situation. You feel what I'm saying? This ain't just these people that you murdered, cuz that was murder. Tyrone West was a murder. Anthony Anderson was a murder. I'm still alive and breathing. I'm wearing this sweatshirt because they are not here to speak up for us, for themselves. You as our elected officials supposed to work for us, not this dog and pony show where we go through these statistics and we go through that. Can we bring in these statistics and show you what you've been doing to us for the last 20, 30 years? How many black people have been murdered here in Baltimore? How many people that went home crying because of this? In my three minutes, take me another one, cuz y'all have been like, three hours we've been here sitting there waiting patiently.
Shorty, I need you to rap.
I am rapping. What you gonna do about us? What you gonna do about killing us and not being responsible for it? What are you gonna do for us? Cuz you represent us, not protecting the police.
Thank you, sir. Next, I've got Trevorx Speaks from Out for Justice. Trevorx.
Can I get a minute, Stan?
No.
I mean, you traded his minute.
Coming up next, Alec Summerfield.
Good evening. My name is Alec Summerfield. I'm an attorney with the People's Power Assembly, a community organization here in Baltimore. I just have a brief statement to read. The People's Power Assembly has participated in a series of marches, demonstrations, and speak-outs since the month of June, when the Baltimore police shot and killed three members of the community in behavioral health crises. The names of our lost neighbors are Bilal B.J. Abdullah, Patricia Brooks, and Dante Melton Jr. The last time I checked, innocent until proven guilty is still a fundamental tenet of the justice system. However, these three residents of our city were handed out brutal death sentences by an unchecked police department. The police fired 38 rounds at B.J. Abdullah, beloved Araber and member of the community. They executed Ms. Brooks after having visited her house 20 previous times for behavioral health reasons. When Dante Melton experienced a public mental health crisis, the BPD did not offer him a bottle of water or kind words, and they didn't dispatch a mental health professional. The offer was restrained and shocked with him, ultimately leading to his death. This series of killings indicate a larger problem. To address racism in policing and the fundamental problems with sending armed officers to individuals dealing with mental health issues, the People's Power Assembly submitted a letter to the Baltimore Commissioner of Police, the state's attorney, and this city council. The letter demanded the formation of neighborhood safety committees, a people's investigation by those committees into these three deaths, and the expansion of mental health services. We never received a response. We hope that the city council will reconsider the demands put forward by PPA. The community needs intervention and change, and they need it now. Baltimore is not the only place struggling with this issue. It's also an issue in the New York mayoral campaign, which is why mayoral candidate Zohran Mamdani has proposed a comprehensive system to deal with this. The fundamental principle of that is that people in many of mental health crises will benefit from care, not force. Healthcare, not handcuffs. To that point, under Mamdani's plan, the city would hire hundreds of mental health professionals to respond when someone is in crisis. These people would be navigators. They would be there to do outreach in the community, to educate the community. And, you know, while we have the 998 and the central Maryland crisis response system, and they have good aims, they are woefully inadequate to handle the current crisis. A Baltimore Sun study found that over half of the calls that get referred to 988 get dropped. The help is not getting there. The PPA and the city and the people of Baltimore are tired of our community members being met by guns and cuffs instead of counseling and support. Not only should funding for mental health crisis response be expanded, but the council needs to adopt a completely new framework, a department that is totally independent of the Baltimore police and can respond to mental health and neighborhood crises with help rather than guns. Thank you.
Thank you.
And I have written copies of my testimony for the council.
I'm gonna call the next three people just so that folks can know who's coming up next. Next is Danielle Richichi. After that, Charlene Rock Foster, and then Lauren Bemmy Bird. Ma'am, I'm going by the sheet that I have in front of me. I'm happy to get you in there. We will make sure to hear your testimony this evening. I appreciate it. Thank you. Go ahead.
Thank you, Council President. Thank you, Council, for having us here.
And apologies, Ms. Bailey, you didn't check the, I'm sorry to interrupt. You didn't check the box that said you wanted to testify? We can absolutely have you do that this evening, though. I apologize for cutting you off. Go ahead.
That's fine. I understand. I'm not gonna point fingers. I'm not gonna try to call anyone out here. I know everyone here is trying to do their best. I believe everyone here is trying to do their best. And I wanna give words of empowerment to you. Everyone is constantly touted about GPRS and the wonder that's happened the last three years. Some people don't know this is the third attempt at it. The other two have been unsuccessful. So what I'd like to do to make sure is that we don't use any half-measures. The reason it's working now, as many public statements have said, is that everyone's rowing together. People are working together. Everyone's attuned to the goal, and everyone's making sure that they work towards that. So I would say, with whatever gets put forward here, that everyone keeps that in mind. They don't have half-measures. They maintain a working order with each other. They maintain respect for each other, and they keep that end goal in mind, and they make sure they work for that. Thank you.
Thank you. Charlene Rock Foster. All right, Ms. Bailey, and again, apologies that you did not get to speak earlier. You did not check the box asking to speak, but appreciate you joining us this evening. Please state your name and proceed.
Good evening. Janet Bailey, La Burton improvement Community Association, Moja Fridge. Thank you for this opportunity, President Council. Good evening to everyone, council members and guests that are assembled. I appreciate this opportunity. I'm not, not here to blame anyone this evening, but do I, I realize, sitting here for three hours, I'm never gonna get a solution to Ms. Brooks' killing, Mr. Milton's killing, none of them. Because all I'm hearing is we're going back and forth. I hear Ms. Brooks right now saying, "It was over 100 degrees. I know I had problems. All I wanted to be was left alone, but now I'm dead." I hear Mr. Milton saying, "I just wanted a cold drink or 50 cent to buy something cool. It was over 100 degrees, June 24th that night." He said, "But instead, you called 10 other officers, threw me to the ground, and now I'm dead." What a shame. What a shame. West Baltimore is mourning our loss right now. It hurts. It hurts me to stand here and talk about it right now, really. That's why I kept leaving out, cuz I wanted to bust out in tears hearing some of this discussion. With 911, I listened to you, young, Miss, ma'am. And you said you divert the calls to 988. With that being said, you say you can come in. I would like to come see those calls, please. And how it's done, Janet Bailey, put me on that list. And also, you said that 911 calls are diverted to 988. So Ms. Brooks' family been calling in all them times in six months. Were any of those calls diverted to 988? You. Okay. Because I'm thinking, if they were diverted to 988, why didn't they come on that hot day, June 25th? I'm just asking questions, okay? Why was the video just released today from Mr. Milton Jr., which takes six hours to see? I just got off from work, been down here three, so I haven't seen all of it. But what I did see, one officer unstringed his shoe and laced him back up. Mr. Milton on the ground, why did it take 10 officers? Mr. Milton on the ground, why did it take 10 officers? Basically, a man, 200, averaged 200 pounds, 2,000 pounds, and their equipment to subdue one man, 31 years old? And then, no one came. So what happened to the EMS? How many systems do we have? Baltimore City? Fire Service? How many systems do we have? And then, we have the MOC system. MOC, Mass Office of Neighborhood and Safety Engagement, been in my community three years. You didn't even know I was the community leader. We haven't heard nothing from them for three years until now, after Ms. Brooks' killing. So nobody's doing their job. They've dropped the ball in West Baltimore, Baltimore City, and now everybody's gathering together. Councilman, thank you for sharing your story, because everybody here has some mental illness somewhere up in their family. And I thank you for sharing your story and being 100% about it. Thank you for this chance and opportunity, but I realize I'm never gonna get no answers. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Bailey. And it is the mission of this council to make sure we do get answers and that we do develop a system that works for everyone. Lauren Bemmi Beard. Fiona Chamness. Come on up, followed by Jack Lewis. And then Benjamin Eke.
Hi, my name is Fiona Chamness. I'm a resident of Baltimore City District 14. I live with multiple mental illnesses, including bipolar and OCD. I also have access to medication, therapy, and income that have allowed me to stay housed, employed, and safe, even when my mind is doing its best to pull my life apart. And as a white woman, I am never automatically treated as a threat just because I'm struggling. Between me and a violent police response to a behavioral health episode are multiple layers of protection I did little or nothing to earn. When someone who might have the same mental illnesses as me, but a different skin color or lower income asks Baltimore City for help, they risk their lives at the hands of the very people who are supposed to protect them. How is that fair? Instead of throwing endless money into the police department in an attempt to train them into not killing people in crisis, something my 68-year-old aunt, who works at an inpatient facility with severely disturbed people, does every day without a weapon and with arthritis, we need crisis response in Baltimore that is accessible, compassionate, effective, and accountable no matter who is in crisis or where. Accessible through public education, compassionate through wraparound trauma, informed services, effective through a case management system that can help repeat callers, and accountable through data transparency and bias prevention. All Baltimoreans living with mental illness, along with their loved ones, should be able to trust that when they need it, crisis response services will be there, prepared to address trauma, not send police to cause it, to save lives, not send police to end them. Thank you.
Thank you. Jack Lewis.
Hello, my name is Jack Lewis. I live in Baltimore in District 11, and I'm a member of the Mount Vernon and Belvedere Association. The public demand to remove BPD from behavioral crisis response has been summarized by the phrase "healthcare, not handcuffs." This slogan speaks to this particular issue, but it also frames a fundamental question of what government is for. Do public agencies exist to give the people of Baltimore what we need to thrive, or do they exist to inflict violence on us? Healthcare or handcuffs? At the federal level, this choice is clearly the latter. Our government is gutting social services at the same moment it's ramping up military spending, ICE terror, and deploying National Guard in our cities. Today, the elected leaders of Baltimore face the same underlying question: Will we invest in the people, meaning real spending, on harm reduction? Or will we continue to subsidize police violence to capture, disappear, and kill our neighbors? The efficacy of these two different approaches cannot seriously be debated. Improving social determinants of health is a proven way to prevent violence before it happens. Dispatching armed agents to find people in crisis is a proven way for the state to kill people, in particular, black people. It has been distressing to sit in this hearing for hours and hear officials try to put blame everywhere but on the police. When President Cohen says we need more calls diverted away from 911, it's because we all recognize that cops pose a danger to our safety. It is an insult to listen to BPD present on their regulations like this is a normal meeting, when everyone knows they killed three people, many more than three people. The awful truth is this is recent news and a historical trend in Baltimore. We know cops get to the scene faster because they have more money, more people, and more cars. Council members, we ask you to live up to your title as public servants and replace BPD with wraparound services. Not more training for BPD, replace them. Do not send BPD as coresponders, replace them. Fully fund the alternatives, and we'll continue to fight for a budget that actually provides treatment, not trauma; care, not cages; and healthcare, not handcuffs. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Benjamin Eke, followed by Devon Caldwell, followed by Tawanda Jones.
Good evening. My name is Benjamin Eke. I'm a resident of Baltimore City District 1 and a second-year medical student at Johns Hopkins School of Medicine. As we all know, three people were murdered by BPD over the summer due to police overreach and brutality in response to mental health crisis. Ms. Brooks, a 70-year-old black senior citizen; Mr. Melton, a 31-year-old young black man; and Bilal Abdullah, a beloved Araber. These deaths should not have occurred and were entirely preventable. Allowing the BPD to respond to more mental health calls is a death sentence to people in our community. It's not a question of if, it's simply a matter of when. This is a genuine public health crisis. Police officers have neither the training nor expertise to handle these delicate and critical situations. We need behavioral health infrastructure, not BPD involvement, and we need the officers that commit these murders to be held accountable. People here today have spoken about the trauma that is brought to these communities and families as a result of this police violence. I'd like to add that the fear of violence when experiencing a mental health crisis or simply daily mental health difficulties forces more and more people who need assistance to the margins. It stops our patients, the patients I have taken an oath to heal, from accessing the services that they need. Between improving the diversion of mental health crisis calls, mobile mental health crisis units, and community-based education programs, there needs to be well-funded, timely, centralized, and widely popularized infrastructure put in place to allow those experiencing mental illness not only to survive their crisis, but to live on full lives. Anything less than that is complicity in killing these members of our community. I would also like to add that while the services provided by BCRI are clearly not adequate yet or up to scale, it is absurd to be scapegoating the shortcomings of those actually providing behavioral health services rather than scrutinizing those pulling the trigger on people in crisis. Thank you.
Thank you. Devon Caldwell. Come on once.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Tawanda Jones. I'm the sister of Tyrone West. My brother Tyrone West was brutally executed on July 18, 2013, and for over 632 weeks, 4,470, 17 days. My family, the West Coalition, has been fighting for accountability, not just for my big brother Tyrone West, who was beat by 17 killer cops in broad daylight, and to this day, still no accountability. And the fact that three community members opened up my brother coffin yet again, and nobody's being held accountable for the fact that we begged for local control. For what? No one has our back. And the fact that worthless Wally walked out as we were coming in. No one has our back. He can't even face us. He's the head, he's the top top. And all he can do is come after these families are brutalizing, love wants are murdered and slaughtered, is justified. Without even any... He don't even review the footage or anything. He just comes out and justify it. Nobody deserves to be brutally murdered. Enough is enough. Like, at any point, it could be any one of us. And I took a mental note, well, I took a note down, and as our brother's and our sister was murdered in June, Councilman County, Councilman Todd Crambrick pretty much went through a mental health crisis. Right there, he had a gun, it got called in, and all the council people backed him, as they should. But when is somebody gonna back us? And thank God, that man walked out alive. But my sister, she didn't. She got gunned down in her own home. It's enough is enough. How many more people gotta die before y'all take our blood serious? How many? How many more? I done watched for over a decade, and I'm thinking, okay, is it gonna get better? It's getting worse. And at the end of the day, we all we got. And it's no justice, it's just us trying to hold folks accountable. We're more than hashtags and body bags. We're more than being six feet in the dirt and pictures and buttons on t-shirts. Our lives mattered. It may not matter to y'all, but it matters to the families that y'all leave behind, that y'all slaughter, our lovers, and we gotta work through this. I took off, I'm a teacher. This is the first week of school. I took off the day for this hearing to be held this late in the evening, and I thank y'all guys for this, but we need action, and we need it now.
Thank you, Ms. Jones, and thank you for your advocacy on behalf of your brother. Hillary Hellerback will be followed by Crystal Favanto, followed by Dan Hellerback.
Good evening. I'm Hillary Hellerback. As a retired social worker, clinician, and Baltimore City resident, I believe that we need Baltimore City crisis response teams to dramatically be expanded and funded, at least in part, by the police budget. Because we need those kinds of responses and mental health support that are much better for our residents than police responses are. Given our long history of, as well as recent murders, there've been many other ones where there have been mental health crises where police have ended up responding and people have ended up dead. These three horrible ones this summer were awful, but they're not the only ones. It took three together to get everybody to respond. This has been happening for a long time. So I believe that officers should not respond to these calls without at least a trained mental health clinician available to lead, collaborate, and follow up as needed with treatment and resources. The culture of policing, which supports acts to overpower and control rather than calm and de-escalate regardless of other training, makes police officers unqualified to respond alone. It is important to walk in the shoes of victims as we move forward to correct the situation. So all of us, imagine being confronted by an officer if you could not speak or communicate clearly, and were scared or in pain? Imagine if you had sensory integration challenges and being held or grabbed, sent shooting pain through your body? Imagine if your ears rang when someone spoke loudly, bright lights blinded you, and it felt like the world was closing in on you, and your anxiety went through the roof when a person in uniform yelled at and tried to control or threaten you? Terrifying, right? You would likely fight, run, or freeze. I know I would. Mental illness or developmental challenges should not be a death sentence or give officers license to control or hurt us. I've worked with families who are concerned about potential police responses to their children, children with special mental health or developmental challenges. I'll give you an example. One family had a sweet, nonverbal, six-foot-tall youth with autism and sensory challenges. The family just moved to a new neighborhood, and his parents were scared about how the local police would respond if he eloped. In my role as a social worker, I was able to facilitate meeting some officers at the home so we could discuss their concerns and inform the officers about this young man's special needs. The family explained that while their son was big and could be mistaken to be dangerous, developmentally, he was more like a two-year-old. The officers, unusually, agreed to take his picture to the precinct and share it. They shared it and actually got a call later that they wondered if the child was out there, and it was someone else, but both those boys were safe because the officers realized that they were not competent to handle the situation, and called on family to help and called on professionals to help.
Miss Hellerback, I need you to rap.
Yeah, I will. So, in, you know...
Need you to close up.
In closing, the training for policing does not qualify officers to respond to mental health crises on their own. CIT training is something that all police should have, but that alone is not enough to appropriately handle this.
Miss Hellerback.
We need to have more money put into this, and it needs to come from the police budget, too.
Thank you. Crystal Favanto will be followed by Dan Hellerback, and then Bridget Dobbins, who I believe already testified. So we'll go to Breonna Murray.
Hello. It's Crystal Favarito, actually. I'm also a second-year medical student at Johns Hopkins. You heard from my colleague Ben a little earlier today. A whole cohort is here from my school, actually, many of whom are interested in going into psych and working with patients who have mental health disorders. But unfortunately, we can't do that if the patient is detained or killed before they make it to the hospital. So our entire cohort is here today to advocate for the increased adoption of alternative first provider models, and I'm really disappointed to hear that many council members don't seem to be familiar with that model. So if you take anything away from my testimony today, I really hope you familiarize yourself with that and educate yourself on that instead of relying solely on the BCRI to do that for you. I think the BCRI, as well as a lot of the other organizations in the city, caught a lot of flak today for outreach or spending for mobile crisis response time, but in these situations, that wasn't the issue. The issue was the police killed someone when a behavioral health provider should have been contacted. President Cohen, you spoke earlier today about the low 911-911-888 referral rates. You did not mention that those rates have actually been declining over the past five years. I'm very grateful to hear that there's clearly some kind of workflow for 911-911-888 referrals, but clearly that doesn't make sense with the numbers that we're seeing reported from other news outlets. And I hope that continues to be a point of investigation for this council. The last point I want to bring up is that whatever intervention the city council comes up with needs to be informed by the community. You need the input of this community, and I don't think that's being modeled in this room right now. You have so much space dedicated to government offices that all the people who want to be here today are sitting in the other room with empty pizza boxes. And we've been waiting two, three hours, right, to do these PowerPoint presentations before you've actually, like, heard from community members today. And I think you're just sowing animosity between people and their government, and I really encourage you to revisit that kind of format. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. And I would highly encourage you and anyone interested in further conversation to join the Baltimore City Trauma Informed Care Task Force. We are... Applications are now in, and I would encourage folks to join. Dan, you're up.
Thank you. And I just want to start out by saying, I understand the reason that we're having a hearing today is because there's a problem, right? And so, and all respect to anyone who's had a family member, who's had any sort of brutality put on their family members, and I just spoke with a gentleman here. My heart goes out to them. A couple... You asked us to kind of talk about some things that I heard today, and I felt similarly. I want to echo that, that it seemed to be a lot of pressure on folks that are trying to do some of the work with getting out the information about 911 and trying to figure out how to help people who are in crisis. And I think, again, the problem lies in the police department. I don't think we should spend any more overtime money. Our budget is how much for the police? $600 million? And 25 times our system has gone down? 24 times, Ms. Brooks got calls? And we can't fix that with $600 million? What are we doing? Where's that money going to? I'm not gonna spend any more of it on trying to train officers, because the trained ones, the CIT officer was the one that knocked down the door before Ms. Brooks was called. That was his training? No, he didn't follow any protocols. So we shouldn't train any more officers. We shouldn't spend any money on that. Let's spend money on getting, like Baltimore County has, Prince George's County has, on their mobile teams. They have... Every one of them has a mental health professional and a peer support person go out with officers. and a peer support person go out with officers. Those are the people that should be taking the lead. We've reduced our number of murders in the city because we've sent people out who can connect with people who have recidivism. Why are we not using the same model? Get people who know people in the city who know these other people out to them, to talk to them, see what they need so that we can preventatively, proactively, not get in these situations where someone with a gun is confronting somebody who's having a mental health crisis. Let's stop doing what we have been doing. It doesn't work. Let's spend our money, right? Follow the money. My father always said that. When I was a kid, I asked him why he read the business section in the newspaper.
They need to rap it.
He said, "Follow the money, that's the news."
You rap it.
So let's put our money into the things that we value as Baltimore residents and community members. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, Brianna Murray.
Hello, my name is Marsha Jues. I have sat here for a couple of hours. I have cried in this room. I've been listening to all of the madness that's been going on in this town. It breaks my heart that we don't have a sensitivity program going on in our police department. Our residents, the citizens of Baltimore, deserve more. There needs to be work that is being done by the head of the police department. He needs to have training, and all of his employees should be sensitized as to how to deal with our community members. This is BS. I don't normally sit here and do this, and you all know me, but this is not right. People sitting down with mental health problems. Mental health, not a broken arm, not a broken toe, mental health. We don't have an infrastructure for our community to be able to get assistance for people who have mental health issues. And we have police managers who are the people who make that first entry for somebody who has mental health issues. They are killing, murdering citizens of Baltimore. Hear me, let me hear you echo what I'm saying in your brain. Our police department is killing our citizens in this town. Why? Why is it so easy and it's so comfortable for our police department to think that they can just shoot and kill our citizens? It could be me. I'm 74 years old. Ain't no telling what I might do waking up in the morning and some police officer, because they done heard something on the street. I could be dead. I live in East Baltimore. It could be me, could be you, could be your family, could be anybody. This is not a joke. I sat here and listened to this madness tonight, and it broke my heart. I've been sitting back there crying. This is real. This is real. And I want everybody to take what I'm saying, because it could be your own family. I've been sitting here, my girlfriend had me come here. She said, "You need to be here." I didn't know what I was coming to. I'm so glad I did. This is what's happening in the city of Baltimore? The city I live in? It could be me. It could be my daughter. Just a minute.
You need to rap it.
It could, I'm a rap it, but I gotta get this out. I hear you, I know that.
Yes, ma'am.
I hear you. But this is real serious, because it could be me, my daughter, or my grandson, or anybody in here. And if our police department can't manage that, they need to change who is running the police department. And you need to get a new one. Then I'm done. You don't have to worry, I'm finished.
Thank you, Ms. Jues. Brianna Murray, gone once, gone twice. Joyce Butler. Andre Kelly, and then Chris Ginnup. Kalia Dea. Nia Hampton.
Hi. Yes, I'm Chris Ginnup. I'm a software engineer and a community activist. I'm on the board of the Hampden Community Council, but I have to be clear that today I'm here representing only myself. Just getting right to the point, I urge Mayor Scott to market the hell out of the 911, the 988 helpline. Geez, I almost got it wrong. I urge you all to commit our law enforcement to de-escalation, to community policing, and to trauma-informed response first and foremost. And even in higher-stakes situations, so that the excuse of suspicion of violence possibly occurring or minor violence that doesn't harm people permanently cannot be escalated into further fatal violence. And this includes focusing the majority of training, the majority on these methods, not just a couple hours of lip service. I, last, I urge you all to implement the very reasonable suggestions from the Coalition for Justice, Safety, and Jobs. And now, I'll get into a bit of the personal. Like, you might think that Hampden isn't really affected by the subject of today's hearing, but I think that's dead wrong. First, none of us here are immune to the effects of discipline-breaking levels of trauma. I've personally suffered from mental illness, specifically a crippling depression and anxiety, complete with behavioral outbursts that I regret to this day. I'm lucky that police were never involved in these, which helps the fact that today I can be a productive worker and an involved community member. Second, I want to say that a sizable number of unhoused people roam Hampden, and these fellow citizens are all too familiar with police and their current methods erring too far towards inflicting trauma on the already traumatized instead of providing desperately needed help or at least a compassionate ear. Third, overpolicing in Black communities affects all Baltimoreans. A community that cannot trust police to have their best interests in mind is a community that no longer cooperates with our structures of justice. It's a community brought down instead of elevated. It's a community of our city, and what affects one reverberates throughout us all. And that is why I urge you so strongly to commit our emergency response to de-escalation, promote 988, and listen to CJ S.J. And to everyone working hard on this, I want to recognize I deeply appreciate your efforts to push this through. May our collective persistence push this city to even greater heights. Thank you.
Thank you. Come on up. If you could state your full name before you provide testimony.
My name is Kalia Attheenbodea. I'm a born and raised Baltimore citizen. I'm a revolutionary communist, a member of West Wednesday. And I'm a human being who understands that mental health demands and deserves adequate training, adequate help, adequate human responses, not automatic, trigger-happy responses. Professional help from healthcare specialists makes much more sense when we consider what people have said, broken bones, broken toes, diseases. You need someone specialized in that to address the problem, not to exacerbate it or create a whole nother problem. Confrontation and eventual aggressive and violent responses from cops only reinforces the true crisis that we in Baltimore and beyond are suffering from. It's not just mental health. It's not just community violence. It's not just police violence, which is sanctioned by the state. It's capitalism. We have to call it what it is, what the actual source is. This system needs us to be fearful, and killer cops are simply the mass weapon of choice. At all government levels, federal, state, and city, programs and policies to support healthcare in all forms aren't getting the necessary funding, if they exist at all. So many of us workers and families are struggling to live healthy lives on account of little or no medical coverage, expensive prescriptions for medication, if we're given them, and the constant bills. I'm noticing a theme. Among other reasons, profit-driven conditions keep us from living how we deserve to, healthy and safe. Again, these mass weapons of killer cops serve to protect capital. I understand people keep bringing up the humanity, the sensitivity that needs to be brought out. It doesn't make sense to require that from a system that doesn't value humanity. Trying to deprogram what consistently is not meant to be deprogrammed doesn't do us any good. We're disregarded by police. We're disregarded by the system, if they even give us any consideration. We're eventual targets. There are children who are taken out just for being at the park. There are students who don't get to go home just because, oh, they took the wrong way, and end up wrong place, wrong time. It doesn't make sense to put forth a training when there's already been the training. It's embedded in the system. The police are meant to protect capital, not human beings. So if we want an actual response that makes sense for the mental well-being of our communities, it shouldn't be police. It shouldn't be mass murderers. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, I got Nia Hampton.
I'm Audrey Kelly. Did you ask for Audrey Kelly or Audrey Dea?
Audrey Kelly.
Oh, that's me, hi.
Oh, come on up.
Hello, my name is Audrey Kelly. I'm a resident of District 3, and I live in Original Northwood. Can you speak enough? Okay, sorry, I've been told I'm a slow talker. So my name is Audrey Kelly. I'm a resident of District 3 in Original Northwood. And I'm also a social worker and a therapist. And I've worked in medical and community social work, and I'm a trauma therapist now. So I was, first wanted to come because I was horrified that, that three people were killed by the police in June. You know? I've had people talk about their experiences with the police after they've had mental health crises. And it's scary, you know? As a therapist, sometimes I have to involve police or have to involve 988. And so, as I was talking, or as I was listening, I first just wanted to say that I really strongly support community alternatives to police. And also, like, neighborhood-based and relationship-based. I'd also like to ask that there be a formal investigation of the murders and that it be really a specific task. But I wanted to give some professional context, maybe to the council members, as somebody who refers people to BCRI and who sometimes interacts with both 988 and 911 in the course of patient care. So in many instances, 988 is not who I would call in an emergent situation because I know how slow they are. I would call 911 and specifically ask for a CIT officer and hope and pray. When I need to send a patient to the ER and want to make sure that they're triaged in a timely way and stay for an evaluation because they're a danger to themselves or others, I complete an emergency petition and then call 911 for a police officer to come and pick them up, even when they are generally willing to go. They must be handcuffed and then put in a car, and this is awful. But that's the only way to transport people to the hospital unless you call 988, which is a total waste of 988's time. So I think I'm going to end there because I want to let other people share. But I also just want to reflect that therapists are good at our jobs because we're trained to reflect and we're trained to regulate our own nervous systems. And I think that police and fire department and EMS are really, really dysregulated in all the worst ways. And they're really, really tasked with all of the worst parts of our society right now. And they are suffering. It's terrible that they are killing people. And it's terrible that people are being killed. And so, yeah, anyway, I'm rambling, so thank you.
Thank you. That is the end of the list, but if there are any other folks that are interested in testifying this evening, if you could line up, again, please state your full name. You will have three minutes to testify. Please bring the mic down.
That's okay, this is right here, right? Thanks so much for making the addition. Hi, Council President Cohen and fellow council members. My name is Chrissy Roth, and I'm a senior policy associate at the NAACP's Legal Defense and Educational Fund. I'm an LDF, as an active member of the Campaign for Justice, Safety, and Jobs. Improving community safety is not merely about preventing police contact, but also about improving larger systems that help our city thrive. Many of us are here with heavy hearts, anger, but also resolve to push BPD out of responses to people in behavioral health crisis and instead offer healthcare and/or community-based alternative response. Though some have suggested crisis intervention training should be mandatory for BPD, studies have shown that equipping officers with CIT has produced no net effect on outcomes of arrest or officer use of force. Last month, the city witnessed the horrific BPD-involved deaths of two Black residents experiencing a mental or behavioral health crisis, Dante Melton Jr. and Piter Chara Brooks. It was reported that BPD visited Ms. Brooks's house 20 times this year alone. This is unacceptable and underscores that much work is left to be done to coordinate inter-agency communication within the behavioral health response system. We must improve voluntary case management, increase 911 call diversion, and expand call types eligible for diversion, implement more rigorous quality assurance protocols in the 911 call center for diversion-eligible calls, and expand culturally-appropriate community-based responders like they have in cities like Durham, North Carolina, Denver, Colorado, and Albuquerque, New Mexico. In the run-up to the consent decree, DOJ's investigation found that BPD regularly used excessive force against Baltimoreans with mental health disabilities or those experiencing crises. Paragraph 97 of the consent decree established the urgent goal to create a program to divert 911 calls and subsequent response involving behavioral health emergencies away from police to behavioral health crisis responders instead. Black Baltimoreans in crisis disproportionately interact with BPD officers compared with people of other races. The most recent demographic data indicates that 58% of Baltimore residents are Black, yet between July and December 2024, 74% of persons identified as being in crisis in BPD interactions were Black. 911 diversion and 988 call data must provide information about these use-of-force incidents that includes race or gender of the people who had contact with BPD during a crisis to the extent possible. And finally, community responders with lived experience serving as trained peer workers may be more credible messengers and culturally responsive when supporting persons in the same race, ethnicity, gender identity, or religion. Thus, we recommend Baltimore must invest in peer respite centers as additional, non-clinical, recovery-oriented environments. Working together, we can collectively forge a public safety system that protects and respects every resident. The lives of those lost in June deserve nothing less. Thank you.
Thank you.
Can you name?
Yes, ma'am.
Charlene Rock Foster. First, I just want to turn and acknowledge and send my love and care and condolences to the Brooks family to honor your humanity and say I'm so sorry that your family had to go through this. And this is a topic of a dual family and a Melton family and every family that has experienced loss because they were misunderstood when they was having the issue they were having with their mental health. And the result is this violence. So I'm gonna say that, and again, my apologies that you experienced it. So I'm gonna turn forward, because we talk about trauma. And the reality is, as you know, Baltimore City is under a lot of trauma, under a lot of health issues, mental health issues that people are walking around, both visible and not visible. And we get to a point where we put aside humanity and start getting into training, 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 and sometimes get to a point where we perceive something to be a threat. It is a threat. And this is how we ended up here. And this is how we ended up here. And listening to this, trying to get answers to what needs to be, what needs to be improved, I'm gonna say this, we deserve a whole lot better than what was presented tonight, as residents, as citizens, as constituents, even public officials, because this is, this is everybody. This impacts everybody. And when you don't see people as human, when you're talking about a health issue or someone just saying things or doing things, or you go into someone's property and they don't know who you are, we're going to get what you get with that. So again, with my suggestion, this is the second time I showed up for this, please, for the love of God, for the love of people, for the love of yourselves, figure out a way to immediately get together and put together a report, a workflow, because this is not, should be happening where we don't know what's going on with this side or on that side, and it's like, maybe, you know, something like that. Let's get it together, please. That's all I got to say.
Thank you for your testimony.
Hello, my name's Carrington Scott. I'm a worker at the Walters Art Museum, a member of the Walters Workers United. I'm also a member of the People's Power Assembly. Talking about trauma and the problems here, the first thing, President Cohen, you talked about, someone needs to own this infrastructure for mental health response, and it's the city, it's you all that need to own it. Private, privatizing it does not work. We're seeing privatizing happening across the country, and they're making systems worse, not better. So pushing it onto a private company is just washing your hands of future blood to be spilling through our city. And then also, the main boogeyman, the main problem here is BPD. BPD has gone through this meeting pretty unscathed. Let's remember that they murdered three people in the, along the avenue. They murdered Bilal Abdullah, power to BJ, power to Peter Karsha Brooks, power to Dante Melton. They murdered those three people, and those three murders looked a lot like Tyrone West's murder, they looked a lot like Freddie Gray's murder, issues in the city that have not been resolved because BPD will never face the punishment that they deserve. Another problem that we can talk about with the city, how about Officer, what's his name? What's his name? What's his name? Kurlan Edwards, the 34-year-old officer that sexually assaulted that 16-year-old girl that should be, he should be standing trial today. I wonder, I wonder how that's going. BPD has a pretty big issue, and it's no surprise that residents of the city would rather call their friends and family or figure it out on their own than reach out to the literal boogeymen that do nothing but terrorize our communities. Thank you. Also going on to that, we want to talk about crisis response, and there was all these things about overdosing and how we need to prioritize people's safety. Following that overdose, overdose in Penn North, BPD brutally raided Douglas Homes, kicked in the doors of residence, found nothing. You call that treating the public? Is that treating the public? Just raiding into an impoverished Black neighborhood or public housing in that and finding nothing? Just breaking down doors, scaring people, lining up on the curb? Where did they learn these tactics? These tactics that just 40 hours of mental health training is supposedly gonna wipe away 40 hours of mental health training? I do trainings at the museum, they're not 40 hours long, but I can tell you, 40 hours ain't enough to wipe away a systemic issue that is rooted in partnerships with enemies across the water that want nothing to do but terrorize, cull, murder, and take the land from Black and Brown people. And obviously, I'm speaking of the Deadly Exchange Program between BPD and the Zionist state of Israel, which is currently carrying out a genocide on the Palestinians. 40 hours of mental health training is not gonna wipe away a race, the brutality that is ingrained in the occupying army known as BPD. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, City Council President Cohen and council members. My name is Donna Brown. I'm here on behalf of Campaign for Justice, Safety, and Jobs, Citizens Policing Project, Making Changes in My Community. Forgive me. Several years ago, activists and advocates made a cry to defund police. Unfortunately, the only thing that our representatives heard was anti-police. Imagine where we would be today if we had, if you had recognized that what we were asking for is this, alternatives to police where mental health and addiction had already been In June, just two days, and just, within just two days, Baltimore lost two of our own citizens, Dante Melton Jr. and Elder, Elder Brooks, I don't want to mispronounce her name. Both experiencing mental health crises. Both families had sought help through the courts. Both were denied support that they needed, and both died at the hands of police. We cannot afford any collateral consequences in this. These are real lives. These deaths were not accidents, they are the direct, direct result of systemic failures, failures to fund, failures to staff, and failures to prioritize real crisis response. When court fees block families from getting guardianship, when admission to care is denied, and when 988 is underfunded and not, not communicated effectively to community, then police become the default response. Public safety is a multi-layered response network, not a one-track mechanism dependent upon police alone. We cannot bury the travesty of lives lost and the impact of families and community behind numbers. These people are real, the experiences are real, for those in need of treatment, care, and aid. Families seeking assistance deserve the dignity of receiving aid when they, when they are trying to support their families, and those in crisis deserve the humanity of care, not the fear or threat of criminalization. Mental health crises are not crimes, they are medical emergencies, and every time we choose to fund policing over care, we dehumanize our neighbors, we dehumanize our family members, we dehumanize our communities and put more lives at risk. We need effectively funded and staffed, community-led, trauma-informed, peer-driven services that save lives and serve our communities. I urge our council to create a system that truly serves our communities, to create a well-funded...
You need to start to wrap.
I'm sorry?
Just need you to wrap up.
I am wrapping up, sir. We need an effective and well-funded and properly-staffed crisis response system that serves our communities, as if our lives depend upon it, as if your lives depend upon it, depend upon it, because they really do.
Thank you for your testimony.
I have no pleasantries for you this evening. I stand before you brokenhearted and enraged at the system-wide failures that are causing those in our city who are most in need of care to lose their lives. For the record, I'm Bridge Dumay, I'm the political coordinator with 1199 SEIU, we are a healthcare workers' union, and I'm delivering the coalition testimony on behalf of the Campaign for Justice, Safety, and Jobs, CJSJ. We are a coalition of faith, labor, and civil rights organizations that convened in April of 2015 to address the injustices unearthed by Freddie Gray's police-involved killing and the subsequent uprising throughout Baltimore. CJSJ is here today to underscore that the remedy to the mental and behavioral health crisis in our city is not criminalization, it is a public health approach, healthcare, not handcuffs. To close the gaps in mental and behavioral health crisis response and prevent contact with police, the city must: standardize diversion protocols, implement a case management system, educate the public about 988, provide a robust wraparound services. You've heard from other members of CJSJ today, and you have our very detailed and extensive written testimony, so I would like to focus my verbal testimony on our fifth point. Make the data about use of force against people in mental or behavioral health crises public and accessible. This will improve crisis response and ensure compliance with the consent decree. Data collection and transparency is the foundation needed to implement all of CJSJ's other recommendations. If the city truly wants more community members engaged in shaping Baltimore's non-law enforcement response to these crises, it must provide relevant data, reports, and analyses, notify the public when new information is available, and communicate next steps clearly. Community safety goes beyond solely reacting in crisis moments. We urge you to be proactive by improving the larger systems that contribute to people's wellness: healthcare, housing, well-funded city services, and living wage jobs. These investments can create longer-term stability and may ultimately reduce crisis incidence in the first place. Thank you for hearing our testimony.
Thank you.
My name is Eric Lewitus, and I live in District 14. I'm a infectious disease biologist, working mostly on vaccine designs, and I'm testifying today on behalf of JUICE United for Justice, and we're part of the Campaign for Justice, Safety, and Jobs, and encourage you to review our coalition's written testimony. When an individual acquires a viral infection, that person becomes at risk of succumbing to the virus and of putting others in similar danger, and we respond by directing that person to a facility that'll provide treatment. We do not ask police to subdue the virus or put the symptoms in the back of a patrol car. So why do we continue to do this when a person is experiencing a mental health crisis? People living with HIV have been treated as criminals rather than patients when they're thought of as unworthy of our sympathy, and I like to think that Maryland no longer holds this attitude towards people living with HIV, but it persists for those experiencing mental health crises. We must recognize that a mental health crisis is not a crime and should be treated with the same sympathy as other health issues. To put this differently, in 2023, the Department of Justice ruled that the Americans with Disabilities Act applies to emergency response systems, and so not meeting the needs of somebody experiencing a mental health crisis is discrimination. There's plenty of precedent for non-police alternatives to crisis response, which have been implemented in the majority of the country's largest cities. The data show that these are safe for responders, less than 1% of responses have resulted in requests for police backup, and safe for citizens. No serious injuries caused by responders have been reported when a non-police crisis response team has intervened. Whereas, a police encounter with a civilian is 16 times more likely to result in that person's death if they have a mental illness than if they do not, a statistic that is much more grim if that civilian is Black and is not improved with crisis intervention training for police. Baltimore has some of the best hospitals in the country, and what we need now to do is to, what I encourage you to do, is to meaningfully and generously fund crisis response teams divorced from police that can connect that care to us when we need it. I think this is how we save lives. Thank you.
Thank you. Before providing some closing remarks, I would ask if there is anyone else from the public that would like to testify this evening. Hearing and seeing no one. I want to first just thank all the folks that showed up tonight. This was a long and, as I said in the beginning, tough hearing. I appreciate seeing community come out, even when it's painful, even when it is not pleasant, even when it hurts a lot, and like Ms. Ju said, it hurt tonight to hear it. I want to thank all the agencies that participated, both government and non-governmental. I want to thank the community panel and the leadership that you all have shown. I want to thank my colleagues for hanging in there. I also want to thank the Office of Council Services, as well as Evy, Lucinda, and Alana, who did a lot of research into this hearing. Let me summarize some of what we heard this evening in order to get to next steps. First and foremost, we do not have enough capacity to run an effective, fast crisis response system. We have asked this evening for an analysis, and I thank you, Deputy Mayor Girassa, for your commitment to, in seven days, provide us with some analysis of what it would take from a cost perspective and an infrastructure perspective to build such a system. Number two, far too few calls are being diverted from 911 to 988. This is a point that came up several times this evening. We need to figure out a fix to that system so that more calls can be effectively diverted, and Director Reddick, I appreciate your partnership and your work in this space. Number three, not nearly enough officers are trained in CIT, the full 40-hour training, and I appreciate commitment this evening to mandate it. Number four, we need to cut through the noise. There are too many folks in this space, there is not a clear enough structure, workflow, or system of management and accountability to know who is ultimately responsible. And so, again, I appreciate our new acting Health Commissioner being here this evening, I appreciate what I expect the work to be, which is demystifying this very complicated system where we have nonprofits and government, and it was said earlier, I think, at the end of the day, someone in city government needs to own it, needs to be at the top and needs to be responsible. Let me also just say this, Baltimore is capable of solving this issue. This is a tough city, this is a resilient city, this is a city that has experienced, as was said this evening, an exceedingly high amount of trauma, and yet and still, folks show up, we do the work, we see less homicides this year than ever before in our city's history, and we are collectively committed to getting this right. Baltimore is an innovator, it was first in the nation to legislate trauma-informed care. Baltimore is a city that cares deeply about its people, and we heard that this evening. I do also want to just appreciate my colleagues on the council. Again, this has been a tough conversation, but this is why we do oversight. It is being able to demystify, it is being able to break through all of the bureaucracy that exists, and I appreciate folks hanging in there this evening. I finally want to just, again, lift up and recognize the families that have lost loved ones, particularly the folks that came this evening, Ms. Dobbins, Chris, Bishop Spriggs, for being here and sharing your voice with us tonight. The pain that you have experienced is immense, Ms. West as well, the pain that you have experienced is immense, and we recognize that, and it will help shape a better system for the city of Baltimore. And so, again, I want to conclude this hearing by thanking folks for showing up tonight and to make very clear that there are next steps, that we do have a game plan here in Baltimore, and that we are going to execute on it. Please do not leave stuff on your seats, please show, continue to show up for this city as you did this evening. This will conclude this committee of the whole hearing. It is 9:10 PM. Thank you, Baltimore, for showing up.